Good evening, everyone. Welcome to this evening's planning board meeting. Tuesday, May 10th, beginning at 7:00 PM in Cahill Auditorium. We welcome all of you to participate in the public hearings as we move through them this evening. Just a reminder, when you do participate as a member of the public, please step forward to the mic and introduce yourself with your name and address for the record. If you're presenting, please take care to, if you step away from the podium, to take the microphone with you. We do have all members of our board present this evening. Our first public hearing is not scheduled until 7:15, so as we customarily do, between now and then, we will jump down to the old/new business section of our meeting this evening. And the first thing on that is a minor modification for 99 Stores Ave. I will be recusing myself from this application and stepping away, and Vice Chair Crowell will be running the meeting momentarily.
As noted, the first order of business under the old-new business is file number 07-16. This is a minor modification and as-built approval request for 99 Stores Avenue. Steph, would you like to proceed before I ask the applicant's representatives?
Thank you, and Vice Chair. Yes, so obviously give the file number. This is a grading permit that was approved in 2007 by the planning board. Approval was given to disturb an area of approximately 2,100 square feet of land and to construct a nine-foot retaining wall at the highest point on the rear and side lot lines. The proposal involved the import of up to 138 cubic yards of imported material. These actions helped stabilize the level out the rear of the property. While the applicant can get further into the requests, however, the retaining wall is constructed is a little bit bigger than what was permitted, as well as some of the design of the rear yard as well. The request for minor modification includes a change to condition number 29, as well as a vote for as-built approval with surviving conditions 1, 5, 11, 12, 14, 21, 27, and 29 as revised.
Thank you. And I see we have a representative of the applicant here.
For the record, my name is Carl Johnson. I'm an attorney and represent James in Eagan of 99 Stores Avenue. With me also this evening is Michael G. Joyce, PE from Joyce Consulting Group, who prepared the as-built plan in a memorandum that was submitted to the board concerning any deviation from the 2007 plan. And with that, we submitted a copy of the grading permit in 2007, a copy of the subdivision approval not required plan, which this board endorsed in 2020. And that was for the division of a paper street that divided 99 Stores Avenue and 87 Stores Avenue, and it added approximately 3,115 square feet to the parcel and cured what was a defect as far as the location of the wall. We've discussed this with, and I know a lot of time has been spent by staff on this, both on the A&R plan and on the review of the grading permit plan. There is a memorandum which certifies all that is required from Michael Joyce, who was here this evening, if there were any questions. I would point out that we also submitted photographs, colored photographs, that actually shows the area of the grading deviation. The permit back in 2007 was done by another engineering group, and at that time, their plans were found not to be exactly correct, and that the, as planted, it is a four-and-a-half percent, so there was only a half percent deviation. We think that that is minor. I won't use the word de minimis, but it can be if you look at how well landscaped and planted that area is. It does not pose any problem with runoff to any other abutting properties. We urge you to accept the recommendation of staff and vote both the minor modification under condition 12 of the permit and vote for as-built approval. Thank you.
Thank you. And with the recusal, alternate Conley, you'll be a voting member, so we'll ask if there's any comments. Member McComme?
Mr. Johnson, just curiously, why wasn't some of the deviations caught when they were, was under construction?
I can't answer that because it was not apparent that there was any boundary line on the site. This was a rather large, if there is ever a grading permit on residential property, this deserved a grading permit because at one point, it's a nine-foot wall and it tapers down. And as it tapered down, the mason, what they did is they met the grade. So that, it's a little bit longer than it was shown, but it did not have any material effect on the permit. The purpose, I believe, and I was not present nor is there any indication, but why the 5% grade was shown on the plan, but as planted and sorted, it came in. So it really accomplished it, and it was picked up because when Mr. Joyce went out there with a registered land surveyor, they found some of these deviations. That's why the A&R plan, we sought that approval, actually almost a year, almost two years ago now, so.
Okay. And I note that there was no change in stormwater, and I'm sure Mr. Joyce would say also in terms of safety?
In terms of, excuse me?
Safety of the wall and the grading, everything. Shaking his head.
Yes, I mean, this had to be approved by a mechanical engineer, by a structural engineer because it's over four feet in height.
Right.
And it goes to nine feet, and I believe that was done at the time, but I have no knowledge of it. But he did review the property and his pictures of the wall, and it has not, this is five years, it's been five years since this has been done, so there hasn't been those settlement or other deviations.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Member Kent?
Just one more question. Fifteen years, what, well, 2007, so.
Five years or something. Fifteen years is, I would say, an unusual period of time, and that we didn't become involved until recently. I say recently, probably three or four years ago now.
Okay, so.
I was, yeah, it was a 2007 plan, you're correct.
Okay, that's all.
Thank you. Member Grove?
Chair.
Okay. And thank you, Member Conley?
Questions at this time, thank you.
Okay, and thank you. I don't have any questions either. I read the staff report, which is very comprehensive, and the engineers' calculations. So if there's a vote, right?
Two votes. So the first would be the vote for as-built approval with the revised condition, as well as the change in record plans. And then the second vote would be for as-built approval with surviving conditions.
Okay. Do we have a motion? Two? And a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? No, it's all ayes. Okay. And a, oh, one more. And a motion, a second motion with respect to the request for as-built approval. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, thank you very much. Okay, next on our list in the old-new business is a request for as-built approval for 62 Park Avenue, file number 2007. And staff would like to give us an overview of that project, that would be great.
Yep. In December of 2020, the planning board voted to approve the grading permit for 62 Park Ave. The applicant was granted permission to install an in-ground pool, grade portions of the site, and just install a retaining wall. The grading permit authorized a disturbance of 4,500 square feet of land, constructing a retaining wall five and a half to six feet in height, in order to provide a level service for the swimming pool and rear yard. In addition to the grading activity, the applicant installed landscaping in the northern portion of the site, in conjunction with the Conservation Commission approval. Staff has reviewed the decision, record plan, as-built plan, and conducted several site visits for this address. Staff does not have any objections to how the site was laid out. The site was built in conformance of the record plans. I would like to note there was a minor deviation. The retaining wall called for stairwell, and the applicant just finished the wall and didn't construct the stairwell interior to it. Staff is recommending that conditions 1, 3, 5, 12, 13, 14, 20, 22, and 34 be survived. The planning board is holding $1,000 in as-built charity, and that will need to be in a motion to release as part of the as-built approval.
Okay, thank you. And is there anyone on behalf of the applicant to present?
We've sent to them.
Okay. All right. Take any questions from members? Member McComme?
No questions.
Member Kent?
No questions.
Member Grove? Member Conley? Okay. And do we have a motion with respect to the request to grant as-built approval with surviving conditions? A second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? And do we have a motion to release this charity? A second? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Okay. And with that, we'll move on to our master plan update, and we'll wait for the chair to come back, or, yeah, I guess we have another minute before the meeting, so.
All right. Master plan update, I heard, I overheard as I was walking out, if I could ask the director just to provide a brief update to where we're at for the...
Of course, Madam Chair, I'd love to. So those of you that are with us this evening here in person and watching at home, Braintree is very involved in a master planning process. We have J.M. Goldson as our consultant. We also have the master plan steering committee, which our planning board chair is a member of. We have a website that is noted here on, excuse me, actually, the website is not noted here. The website is found on the front page of our town website, excuse me, and what's noted here on the agenda is a little information about our master plan community forum that's going to be held in this room on May 21st. It starts at 1:00 PM, and we're doing open house style forum, so there'll be some opening remarks at the beginning, but then there'll be stations and tables that you can choose to visit, you know, just for a half hour, or you can stay for the full time. So we're encouraging all residents that are interested in the master planning process to participate. If you have children that would like to come, they're also welcome. Like I said, we'll be here for those two hours. If you're not able to attend the event, please check out the website as we post the meeting information and activities that take place at the regular master plan committee meetings on the website as well. So plenty of ways to get involved. Any specific questions? My phone number and information is on both the town website and the master plan website itself. Melissa Santucci-Razi, and anybody can call me anytime with any questions or comments or suggestions or just information in general about the process and where the town is at this time. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Great, thank you so much. If you are a resident of Braintree and you're in the audience, we have been posting around town signs for the community forum. Just to raise a hands out of point of curiosity, has anybody seen these around town or have heard of our event on this date yet? All right, we got to keep advertising, not a lot of hands raised, but we're committed to make this a good public outreach event, so hopefully we'll see some of you now that you're aware that that's going on. Yes, Member Grove?
A meeting that would benefit by a Zoom component?
We're not doing it.
I didn't ask you if you were doing it, I asked if it was conducive to it.
Well, it's going to be stations and an open house, so.
I would say probably not. We will have B-CAM, even B-CAM, the straight recording, really, that format doesn't work for that. So we will have a B-CAM employee with a camera, and we're going to have them kind of pivot around the room and hopefully get some information from some residents and get as much dialogue as we can on the recording.
Thank you.
Thank you, Member Grove. The first public hearing this evening, which begins at 7:15, is 429 to 445 Quincy Avenue, a major modification to site plan review, decision file number 15-07. If the applicant is here and would like to come up to the podium and just introduce yourselves and give a brief overview of the project this evening, that would be great.
I'm happy to get the comments from the audience.
Oh, yep, that's right.
Notice is given by the planning board. The vision is to maintain the wall, check 48 section levels, create its own roof, check 135, 145, 155, 165, 175, 185, 195, 205, 215, 225, 235, 245, 255, 265, 275, 285, 295, 305, 315, 245, 255, 265, 275, 285, 295, 305, 315, 325, 335, 345, 355, 365, 375, 385, 395, 405, 415, 425, 435,
In 2015, that property was cleaned up by the Quirk companies. And we developed a state-of-the-art Jeep dealership. And that was Planning Board Decision 1507, 15-07. So tonight, because in 2015, there were three lots that were designated. The one where the Jeep dealership is, is about 6.2 acres. The Quirk Hyundai dealership, which is proposed tonight, will be on the four acres, which is a paved, currently a paved ancillary parking lot for inventory. And then there's a 2.6 acre site, which fronts on Quincy Avenue next to the Dunkin' Donut. So all combined, that's 13 acres of property that was involved in the 15-07 decision. So tonight, we deal with the four-acre site, which is adjacent to the Quirk Jeep site. And with regard to that, you all have the Planning Board staff memo prepared by Ms. Santucci-Razi. And as at page five of the staff report, as pointed out, with construction of Quirk Hyundai, the existing impervious surface will be reduced by about 2,500 square feet. So there'll be less than 60% of the site that will be impervious on this approximate four-acre site. And as shown in the plans, the dealership positioning of the building complies with all dimensional and density requirements. All setbacks, the open space in highway business zone, as the board knows, is 25%. We have more than 25%, significantly more, as shown on the plan. The maximum lot coverage is 75%. We have significantly less. The minimum open space is 25%. And as stated, we have more. The maximum building coverage is 25%. We have significantly less than 25% building coverage. So all of the zoning dimensional and density requirements are complied with under the zoning bylaws. And as stated in the staff report, the original plan that you have on file showed about 8,500 square feet would be used for sales and showroom, and about 18,500 square feet would be used for service. So that comprised the approximately 27,280 square feet. With reference to the site, the site balances. There's no import of fill or export of fill. And the staff report points that out at page eight of the report. The project is very straightforward and requires minimal site work, as shown on the plans, where 73 parking spaces would be required for the dealership. There's significantly more. There's 157 parking spaces provided. So on every matter under zoning, the project complies in terms of dimensional, density, use by right. And car dealerships are historically not substantial traffic generators during peak hour. They have Saturdays hours, they have evening hours. And some of the materials that we turned in from VAI, Jeff Durk, first of all, we turned in, they submitted a traffic memo of February 2022. And that traffic memo shows that the projections that were made in 2015 were significantly greater than the actual counts that were taken, as shown in the February 2022 memo. Actually, there were 41%, approximately 41% less vehicle trips than were projected in 2015 with the Jeep dealership. And VAI and Jeff Durk also provided a specific memo dated yesterday for this project, which concludes that there'll be approximately one new vehicle every two to three minutes during the peak hour. So again, no issues in terms of the road network and any impact of the proposal. Finally, there were stormwater improvements. There's an O&M plan that has been submitted. And the JCLA landscape plan shows the addition of 23 trees, 33 shrubs, 37 perennials in ground cover. So this project continues the investment of millions of dollars of investment that has been made by the Quirk companies in the Quincy Avenue commercial corridor and transforming what was once a junkyard and an environmental hazard into the state-of-the-art dealership that exists up there with Quirk Jeep and now with Quirk Hyundai. I want to just conclude by saying that we reviewed the draft conditions prepared by staff, and they were all acceptable. But on May 4th, we heard from the manufacturer that they want to turn the building, and we have to do that and submit revised plans. So we will work with the staff prior to June 14th to be back here on June 14th with some pretty minor revisions. And I can, if, may I approach and distribute this?
Yes, ma'am.
Madam Chair.
Thank you.
So what this shows is, the front page is this board that I have up here. And it shows that, as compared to what was originally filed, the building will be reduced by about 3,000 square feet. So it's going to be a smaller building than was applied for, and the building turns slightly. The second page of what you have shows the turning of the building. So that the tan portion is what we'll be coming back with revised site plans. And the green outline is what was originally submitted. So those are the, except for that, we would be asking the board to approve the draft conditions that were prepared. But we will be coming back with a smaller building and a slightly turned building. So at this point, I'm happy to answer any questions that the board might have.
Okay, great. And just a reminder to the public that this is a public hearing, so if there is anybody in the audience who would like to ask a question or comment on this application, just come on up to the podium, and we will address, we'll let you address the board. Member McComme, do you have any comments and questions at this time?
Thank you. I saw it in there, Mr. Marinelli, but could you remind us, please, where the curb cut entrances and exits are for this dealership?
So there's, as reflected on the handout, the existing curb cut is the one furthest to the right, closest to the Columbia Terrace and Patton Avenue curb cut. That's the existing one. And then the one to the left is a new curb cut. So, and following the staff report, the staff has asked that that be one way, either in or out, and we're going to, you know, further work on that. So the one, the one to the left is the new one.
Okay, okay, you mean one way in and out of the dealership?
Probably.
But Pat Nav is two-way?
Exactly, yes.
Yeah, okay, okay. So is there going to be signage at the entrance of Pat Nav?
So if I may, through the chair, in response to Darrell's, so I talked to Frank, and they're going to take a look at that one, that curb cut. They're going to have Jeff look at it. If anyone's been up Pat Nav, it's pretty steep.
Mm-hmm.
So we have the curb cut there, we have a slope. We want to make sure that people can see cars coming up the hill and turning and vice versa. So we had talked a little bit about realigning, excuse me, restricting that. Now that they've changed the building, and Frank, I believe before the curb cut closest to Quincy Ave was going to come in and you were going to take a right into the service.
Mm-hmm.
Now, this building, which again, I haven't had an opportunity to go through it in detail with Frank, depending on the circulation of this particular building and where the service is, because you want people to come in and go right into the service area, and then, so that would be where the one-way in would be. And then the other curb cut could function as a two-way curb cut. Or if now they're going to come in at the further one, then we would make that an exit only. So we just want to make sure people can get in. That's when people go in the morning, they're leaving at night. Clear shot, go in, get the car in service and have, you know, whether they're going to, the shuttle's going to take you somewhere, or somebody's waiting to give you a ride. The salespeople, well, they're going to pull in, they might tool around the lot a little bit and then park the car and go in. I don't know, that's what I do when I'm looking for a vehicle. So we just want to make sure that people can get in the site safely, get to the service area. And so we'll be making, the comments I have in the staff report, based on my discussions with Frank and the circulation with the traffic consultant, I could possibly have an update for that at the June meeting.
Okay. And just looking at it, it seems a little narrow. Has the fire department passed judgment in terms of circulation of fire trucks?
So the prior plan, the fire department had approved, no objection. And I don't think this changes any of their recommendation. But I think once we submit the revised plan, they'll have an opportunity to comment again. It'll be circulated to all the departments.
Yeah, double-check it. Okay, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Member McComme. Member Crowe, any comments or questions?
No.
Thank you. Member Grove, any comments or questions?
Ma'am.
Member Kent, any comments or questions?
No.
No. Member Connolly, any comments or questions?
Thank you.
Is there anybody from the public who wishes to speak? Please come on up to the podium. And just as a reminder, just make sure to speak into the microphone and just introduce yourself, name and address.
We, I have notes that I will read. We are Lucia Quahley and Phil Smith. We reside at 11 Patton Avenue East Braintree. The Smith family has lived and owned the home on Patton Avenue for over 70 years. Despite being surrounded by ever-increasing dealerships and parking lots, we enjoy our home immensely. Despite the decisions by both Quirk and the Planning Board, which have impacted our quality of life, we have been good neighbors by keeping our home well-managed and maintained. We have reviewed the site plans for the two additional dealership buildings proposed, although I understand you're really only discussing one of them tonight, bringing the total number of buildings to five, which basically abut our property, which includes the Viking Club and former Quintery Mall, which are directly across the street. Upon review, there are a number of potential impacts on Patton Avenue, specifically additional signage and lighting to the already invasive situation, additional traffic, especially increased test driving on Patton Avenue by buyers operating vehicles unfamiliar to them, the increased frequency of the sales force using the auto alarm system as a locating device, property value, construction vehicles and noise, most especially potential drilling, safety, most especially for the group home, which is next door, and the excessive visits by first responders, police, EMT and fire. And as a matter of fact, the fire department was there today, parked on Patton Avenue. Most importantly, and you have been having some discussion on this already, is the location of the driveway, which is currently planned directly opposite our front door and driveways. And that would be the new cut curb that I'm talking about, the one that's on the west side of the dealership, closest to Quincy Avenue. That would be directly in front of our home. We ask the Planning Board carefully weigh these concerns and mitigate the following solutions. Lighting and signage be kept within the regulated guidelines, no variances. Test driving not allowed on Patton Avenue. Vehicles can exit the dealership, the new dealership, via what I call the east entrance or the current cut curb for that parking lot. No use of auto alarm systems to locate vehicles within any of the parking lots. And that includes the current dealership and the new dealership that has not been really discussed here, that they are planning on putting up a 4,000 square foot dealership directly behind our house, between us and Dunkin' Donuts. So I just want to make clear that you know that there are two additional dealerships being planned and constructed that will impact our quality of life. We ask that any construction for the one behind our house and the one in front of our house be within the town construction guidelines of times of construction. I know you have like start times and end times and things like that. That construction vehicles will not access the site from Patton Avenue. As already mentioned, it is a very narrow street and is a very steep hill. We ask, I don't know what the timing is for the beginning of these construction projects. I would be interested in knowing the answer to that. But it would be preferable if perhaps construction could start in the fall, perhaps October, when it would help mitigate the dust and the dirt invading our home from possible construction sites. For safety purposes, we would request that all traffic for the dealership business purposes not be accessed via Patton Avenue, but rather through the many acreage access points already established for the current dealerships. We request that, and I understand that this is under review and discussion because of the change that's being made, that the west driveway entrance be moved eastward to the opposite property already owned and managed by Quirk. And that's all we have for comments.
Great, thank you.
Are there any questions?
Madam Chair?
Yes. Director, please.
Just quickly to clarify. Nice to see you. So a lot of the things that you mentioned are actually in the draft conditions. And one thing that I want important to note is that this, the building, the pre-owned dealership that was permitted behind you is not going forward. So that, this decision, when and if it's issued by the board, talks about it not being, basically, they're doing this instead of that.
Okay, we weren't clear about that? We tried to review the plans, we weren't clear that this is in place of the other one?
Yeah, I mean, it is, we kind of, the three sites that the board is familiar with, and, oh, excuse me, three lots, and we treat them as a site. And they kind of all work interchangeably. So the conditions and restrictions about using Pat Nav, and that those are kind of longstanding conditions that we instituted probably in discussions at the hearings when we did the Jeep dealership. So a lot of that stuff is being carried forward. I've taken some notes here, and I can go back and just make sure that for the next meeting that these things, we've kind of set it up so that the curb cut closest to Columbian is really the one that's going to be for the test driving, people bringing the cars and all that stuff, no car carriers. They unload everything over at the shipyard and bring it over. So really trying to minimize the use, understanding Pat Nav, there is two, there's one residential group home on the corner, and then the next home, the Cape, owned by the individuals here this evening. But Pat Nav has a pretty steep slope. We also, in the conditions, ask for the test drive routes, so we can weigh in on that and restrict that as needed. I think ideally, people would come out, go down Columbian and go to Hill Ave and access Quincy Avenue that way to make the test drives. And that's kind of been something that, like I said, was part of Jeep, and we just continue to carry that forward.
Okay.
Shall I show you where the curb cut that we'd like to?
If you, yeah, if you want to point it out, but if you're going to speak, you just have to take the microphone with you.
So right now, the curb cut is right here, and our house is right here. So we would ask his property, our property line is right here. So we would ask just for this curb cut to be put so that his, some of his customers could actually drive up to here, to this curb cut, and go straight in from his property, instead of being way over to this side. So that's one thing we were, you know, looking at.
That's our main concern.
Yeah, that's probably our main concern, is possibly moving that curb cut over, and then the traffic's not coming across, directly across from our house.
Okay. All right. I don't have any further comments. I think the commentary by the residents is important, and it sounds like a lot of it will be able to be addressed. So maybe at the next meeting, we can just highlight in the conditions the parts that address the residents' concerns and just make sure that's set. Is there anything else you'd like to add, Attorney Marinelli?
No, I think Mr. Quirk and his companies have been a good neighbor. You know, it is a use by right. Residential is not a use by right in that area. But nonetheless, we recognize the longstanding use of the home and respect that. I think that Mr. Quirk has done fencing and other things that were requested, so.
Great. So this evening, it looks like, is there anybody else from the public who wishes to speak? Not seeing anybody. So it sounds like we're looking for a motion to continue this to the June 14th meeting at 7:15. Motion by Member Grove, do we have a second? Second by Member Kent, all those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? The next item on our agenda is a new public hearing for 1579 Washington Street, special permit and site plan review, file number 22-04, Harmony Contract Furniture LLC is the applicant. If we could just have staff read into the record the public notice, and then the applicant may be underway in introducing the project and their team.
Notice given by the Planning Board under the provisions that match General Law, Chapter 48, Sections 9 and 11, and the Braintree zoning ordinance, Chapter 135, Article 1, 5, 6, 7, 8, 11, 12 and 14, that a public hearing will be conducted on Tuesday, May 10th, 2022, at 7:15 PM in Braintree Town Hall. The Planning Board will consider a special permit and site plan review application from the applicant, Harmony Contract Furniture LLC. The applicant is proposing to construct a 5,460 square foot building to accommodate general office space with accessory storage and garage. The project also includes utility, stormwater, parking, lighting and landscaping improvements. The site is 14,360 plus or minus square feet, and has an address of 1579 Washington Street. It's zone general business district and within the watershed protection district, as shown on Assessors Plan 1053, Plot 10.
Thank you, Connor. Attorney Marinelli, if you'd like to introduce the project and the team, that'd be great.
Yes, once again, good evening, Madam Chair, and members of the board, Frank Marinelli. And I'm pleased to appear on behalf of Christine Dostasio. And Christine is here in the front row. And her company is Harmony Contract Furniture. Also here is our project engineer, Sean Hardy of Hardy Man. In 2012, Christine started her woman-owned business, Harmony Contract Furniture. Just by way of background, she has a degree in business administration. She's a furniture industry expert. Her company provides furniture to restaurants, bars, country clubs, private clubs, hotels, healthcare, universities and corporate spaces. She currently operates Harmony Contract Furniture out of a suite of offices at 25 Garden Park in Braintree. She lives in Braintree, the business is a Braintree small business. She has four employees, and visitors are by appointment only, and, which is almost non-existent, since Harmony Contract Furniture provides their services remotely by computer for their customers throughout the country. So you've got four employees and virtually, as Christine says, no visitors. For years, she has sought to purchase a site for her small business. The property of 1579 Washington Street became available. The insurance agency, Fri Agency, that occupied the site, was destroyed by fire, and the owners decided to sell. And Christine and her related entity have the property under agreement with a short time period for permits and approvals. She has to close the current, under the current agreement, in July, and we're hoping to be able to seek and obtain permits and approvals during the May and June timeframe. She has diligently, on short notice, assembled a development team with site engineer, landscape architect, building architect and others. And in a short time, plans have been filed with the board for site plan approval, and also a special permit is required because the property is in the watershed overlay district. And I think that we fulfill, as shown in the engineering report, the various criteria for the watershed special permit, which Sean Hardy can discuss. So she seeks to construct the approximate 5,400 square foot building that's shown on the plans. The office space for her and her employees is approximately 3,122 square feet, and the rest of the building is a garage for a small truck and a van, and storage samples that they sometimes bring to customers like restaurants in Boston and so forth. The property, by way of background, is located in the general business zone. The proposed business offices are a use by right, and they have accessory garage and storage. The parcel is shown as Plot Number 10 on Assessors Map 1053. The vacant lot is 14,360 square feet, as shown on the zoning legend on the plans that you have. And it's a pre-existing, non-conforming lot. It's less than 5% short of the required 15,000 square feet in the underlying zone, about 640 square foot short. And it existed that way for decades. I mean, it's just a given condition of the site. The site currently has no stormwater controls, and significant stormwater improvements are proposed. The site is lower than Washington Street, so approximately 800 cubic yards of fill and retaining wall are required to bring the site to the desired grade. So it's not exactly a plug-and-play for somebody's first foray into development, but I commend Christine for taking on this project and being committed to Braintree and being committed to her business, and to investing in this site, and to creating something, as you can see from the architectural plans, that the town can be proud of. The drainage and stormwater will be served by a Caltech system, which was designed by Hardy and Mann. Even though she has just four employees, there are 10 parking spaces that we've provided more than enough for her business. There is also very generous landscaping shown on the Chris Romaniac Landscape Plan. When you look at the plant list, you'll see over 100 plantings, which essentially transform a barren commercial site into a very aesthetic and landscaped corporate office for her small company. The building itself is designed by JBD, JGA architects, who designed a lot of country clubs, high-end facilities that Christine works with. And JBD, JGA has also provided color samples of the materials they will use with this unique contemporary design of a small building. We've submitted all of that to the Planning Department. You can see that the building employs significant glass and redwood finishes, earth tones, pewter gray metal finishes. It's really a very attractive building on a site that is, just as I said, a barren vacant lot at this time. We've received the staff report, which concludes that if the Planning Board is inclined, depending upon the outcome of the meeting, that staff would seek permission to draft findings and conditions for the June 14th meeting. Obviously, that's what we're hoping for. At this time, before I introduce Sean Hardy to go through the drainage and stormwater with the board, I'd like to give Christine, who as I said is a Braintree resident and a Braintree business, an opportunity to speak with the board. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I wasn't expecting it that quick. Hello, Board. My name is Christine Dostasio, and I have been a resident of Braintree for 11 years. I started my business 10 years ago, and I've been in the furniture industry for 25 years. So it was, I really liked Braintree, and I thought it was really natural to just plant my roots here. I've been looking and looking, and I finally found looking, and I finally found a spot. So if you want to know a little bit about my company, we custom-design furniture for all these hotels, big, brand-name hotels around the country. And it's really a fascinating, behind-the-scenes type of work, where we're working with designers and architects to produce these beautiful products that get shipped throughout the whole United States, right from Braintree. So it's pretty amazing, some of the big projects that we work on, you know, in California, Chicago, DC, around the whole country. So I don't know how much more I should say, but I'm very happy to be at this point. It is my 10-year anniversary, so it's a big deal. So thank you very much.
Congratulations.
And now Sean Hardy can speak to the stormwater and drainage, and the site elevation that we intend to raise.
Great.
Good evening. Sean Hardy with Hardy and Mann Design Group. As Attorney Marinelli said, the existing site, it's about a 14,000-square-foot lot. It has an existing paved driveway that served the previous building that in 2022, I guess, or was, two years ago, was destroyed by fire. So we are proposing this, the new building with associated parking. To accommodate that, we, based on, we did a number of test pits out there, and found that the groundwater elevation is at about elevation, approximate 112. So at the front of the site, up by the street, it's at about elevation 119, and slopes generally back to the left rear of the site, at just over that 112 elevation. So in order to provide stormwater for this, we are proposing a series of, there's two CULTEC chamber systems to infiltrate roof runoff, one to the front and one to the rear. Together, they total about 31 of CULTEC C100 chambers, and they provide over 1,000 cubic feet of stormwater storage. The soils were found to generally be sandy, with a good infiltration rate, so we feel as though it'll work well. The other thing, based on the site, we had to only accommodate the roof runoff into the chambers because of the elevation of the groundwater in order to do a collection system with the appropriate rim to invert separation and provide treatment for that. It didn't make it feasible without raising the site even further. But we are reducing runoff for all storms to 10, 25, 100, both the runoff rate and the runoff volume, based on this. We did receive staff comments, and we do note that there are some revisions that need to be made, or items added to the plan. We're happy to do those. I didn't see anything there that we would disagree with, so we will be making effort to make those changes. I understand the deadline to be, is May 23, in order to have those in in time for the next meeting, and we fully intend on accomplishing that.
Great. Thank you very much. Is that it on your presentation?
Yes.
Okay. If we could just have, I think Assistant Director Murphy had done the staff review of this. If you could just kind of go over your staff report, and just kind of identify any areas that, you know, are of concern, or that you're working towards, you're working on over the next month or so.
So the department is, excuse me, the department is still awaiting department comments from the police, the fire, stormwater, engineering. Those are due by May 23, so hopefully we'll have those soon. In addition to that, staff did do a site plan review of this proposal. There are some additions to the plan that need to be made, some minor. Staff does have a concern with the design of the stormwater parking lot, and that's something we will await comment from the stormwater division on, and then work in conjunction with them for the next meeting. In addition to that, staff does have some concerns about the lighting, the snow storage, refuse collection, things of that nature. Attorney Marinelli did submit some materials this afternoon. Those were included for you tonight. Staff hasn't had a chance to review those yet, ahead of this meeting, and those will be encompassed in the next review for June. In addition to that, there is mention on the watershed criteria. Staff would just like that the applicant make a better effort in addressing that for the next meeting as part of their revised submittal.
Okay. And just a reminder, this is a public hearing, so if there are any comments from the audience with regards to this application, please feel free to come up to the podium to address the board and ask those questions, or provide those comments. I'll open it up to the board for their comments and questions, and I'll start with Member McComme.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It's always good to see a robust redevelopment, and particularly of that particular spot, which was pretty well-known. And I like the landscape plan. I think it's always important to make, you know, your building look good, because it reflects back on your business. So some do it, some don't. I think yours looks interesting, and Mr. Marinelli knows that. So landscaping is very important. I asked the Assistant Director, I noticed that we're going to be moving some earth. Does the grading permit covered by the Special Permit and Site Plan Review?
Correct, yes. The grading is encompassed under Site Plan Review.
Okay, thank you. And my only other question is, I noticed some potential signage, and I just wanted to make sure that, if you've done any initial analysis, that it fits all the rules and regulations.
I did very quickly. They will have to go to the Zoning Board of Appeals for more than one wall sign, or more than one ground sign, in the form of a variance.
Okay. Yeah, that's what I thought. So you have a lot more signage than, you know, the regulations allow, so. Okay, that's all I have, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Member McComme. Member Crowe, any comments or questions?
I have two questions. Speaking of the ZBA, one of the comments was that there was an application filed with respect to the parking, and I was curious what the status of that was.
So the, when you look at the site plan, the parking requirement would be about 15 parking spaces, when you factor the office component and the storage, which is one per thousand. And, you know, the site is what it is. We can't change the fact that it's 14,360 square feet, but we don't need that kind of asphalt and parking. And so we're asking for reasonable relief from the zoning board. It is a pre-existing, non-conforming site. You know, you always have to try to work with sites like that, as the board knows, and that's what the zoning board does. They approve alterations and extensions on non-conforming sites, and also grant variances where the case has been made that justifies a variance. And in that regard, we do have a parking supply and demand study that was done by Ronald Mueller and Kirsten Braun, who are established traffic and parking consultants, engineers. And they have determined in their report that the 10 spaces provided are more than adequate for the proposed use.
Okay, thank you. And so has that hearing been scheduled?
Pardon?
Has that hearing been scheduled?
Yes, so that hearing is May 23.
Oh, okay. Okay. Yeah, and that just, this is sort of not related so much to the application, but I know our zoning, Section 803, allows some flexibility to modify parking with respect to the special permit, but there needs to be sort of a set aside, and that might be, I know it's come up on this and a couple other applications, whether there's a chance when we, when we ever do look at the zoning in more detail, to take a look at that, and see if that's something that we can take care of with the special permit. But as far as this application is concerned, just one other question. The special permit that was filed here was, I know that encompasses the grading, but is there another reason why the special permit was filed?
So it's watershed, under 609?
Oh, okay.
So there's, it's in the watershed overlay district, which, if you look at the final page before the appendix on the engineering report, the site as designed is in harmony with the watershed protection district by preserving and maintaining the water table and the water recharge areas. That's one of the findings. The design is appropriate to the natural topography, soils, and other characteristics of the site to be developed by proposed grading and stormwater design that reflects the high groundwater table, which is a characteristic, a unique characteristic of the site, and the high capacity of soils to provide infiltration. Thirdly, the design will not, during construction or thereafter, have an adverse impact on any water body or water course. And the included O&M plan has been provided to ensure construction period protections and ongoing maintenance of the stormwater system. So that's the third finding under the watershed special permit. And then the final finding in the engineers' report is the design will not adversely affect an existing or potential water supply. The site has been designed to provide stormwater controls where none exist today. There's nothing, there's uncontrolled runoff and no stormwater. Those controls that will be provided have been designed to infiltrate stormwater flows from new impervious areas, maximize infiltration and recharge, and reduce stormwater rate and volumes from the post-construction site. So all of that is improvement. All of that is consistent with the purposes of the watershed. And then finally, just to address again your first question, Vice Chairperson, it was, you know, we talked about the parking, and that the 10 spaces would be enough. The underlying zone, the general business requires 10% open space. The watershed requires 30%, and we comply with that. We have 35%, 35.8% open space. So that's pretty good for a non-conforming site to actually comply with the increased watershed open space.
Thank you very much. Those are all the questions I had.
Thank you, Member Crowe. Member Grove, any comments or questions?
No, ma'am. Thank you.
Member Kent, any comments or questions?
Just a couple of questions. I'm looking at the plans here, and there's a storage and archive section, and a showroom section, so samples or whatever, what happens if an 18-wheeler shows up to deliver those? Is that going to be, turn radius going to be a problem?
No, so we provided a narrative. Christine did a narrative that just shows that there's no conflict in any of the activities. I think that, like she said in her narrative, it's appointment-only. If there's, and she doesn't generate a lot of trash, so there's not going to be like a BFI truck coming in and out. She has the trash that would be associated with an office building, and she's got a recycling bin, and so that's one activity that we think will be, you know, in maybe, how often, once a week?
Basically, once a month, maybe.
Okay, so that's minimal.
Down to weeks.
Yeah. And then, and then the, when you do a sample, you go out to the site? Yeah, come on up here, just to answer Mr. Kent's question.
Furniture samples tend to be quite large, so if you can understand the size of your sofa in your home, I mean, it's a pretty big box. So that would not come in the front door. It would get delivered down to the garage area, and it would go into the showroom. So I have, I'd say about 400 samples of chairs, and bar stools, and booth seating, and tables, which I need to be able to have access to, to show a designer what they're going to select for that particular project. So small deliveries, which is usually what we get, Amazon, FedEx, the US Mail would come in the front door, and, you know, it would be very few and far between for the larger things, because I have so many samples.
Right, thank you.
Yeah, okay.
That's all.
Member Connolly, any comments or questions?
I have a question on the north elevation, the garage space. How often is that going to be with traffic coming and going, and the opening of those doors?
Do I have that up for you? Okay, good.
Thank you.
Well, in the wintertime, I like to store the vehicles, because they're very high in the garage, so that there's no snow on the top, because you need to be able to take the snow off of your vehicles in the winter, and it's not possible. It's, I believe, almost 12 feet high. So they're just for storage in the winter. And how often? Not that often.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Oh, I just, I want to add, during the regular months, they would be parked in the parking lot. And it's just more for the winter, just so I don't have to deal with the snow. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Member Connolly. And just a reminder, this is a public hearing, so if anybody has any comments they'd like to share, please feel free to come up to the podium. I have some general comments, questions. First off, I would like to just congratulate you on 10 years in business. I know, being a small business owner myself, that is quite an accomplishment, and I'm thrilled to see this sort of investment into the town of Braintree, so thank you for that. A question on overall site planning. The retaining wall that wraps around the site strikes me as a little bit unusual and potentially costly, so I was just wondering if there was any evaluation of designing the site without it, and kind of how you got to that layout.
Would this be something for Jean?
Sure. I think that, you know...
Yeah, the intent, I think for the employees, if you look at the floor plan, there's like a kitchen area in the back there, and it's a secondary means of egress out there. So they were thinking that that could be an area that the employees, you know, on a nice day, could go out and kind of congregate, was generally why the applicant wanted that.
So there would be like a first-floor exit at the back of the building?
Yes.
That would want to be at grade, or would it be like acceptable to come down a couple steps to like a lower area?
It was at grade.
At grade.
I want it to be outdoor seating area in the summer.
Okay. And then, I do have some technical concerns about the stormwater design, but I do understand that we may be waiting for comments from the stormwater division and the engineering department. So do you anticipate a technical review from those departments?
Yes.
Okay, all right. The top-of-wall, bottom-of-wall elevations, I think I noted that is going to be provided in the staff report, so I assume that's forthcoming. Is that wall, is that proposed wall going to be, what type of wall system are you proposing for that?
It's going to be stacked block.
Like the big, like is it versilock, or like the bigger blocks? Do you have that?
It's going to be like a versilock. We haven't fully selected it yet.
Okay.
But, so I do have spot grades around the top elevation, but I do note that you want to have a spot, it's existing at the bottom, but we will call out top and bottom or all-around.
Okay. Was there any consideration, I note that you noted that there was not the ability to treat the driveway, and I think typically, we look to have the pavement treated over the roof, because it's generally considered clean runoff. But was there any consideration for using an alternative driveway surface, like a porous pavement, or something like that, that would allow you to, you know, maybe mitigate stormwater in the pavement section, as opposed to the CULTEC chambers?
We did discuss it, but the porous pavement has a maintenance requirement that is burdensome for a small business with monthly vacuum sweeping. As it is now, the paved surface is actually getting smaller with this design, so that's why we felt it was appropriate. The roof area was what was becoming larger, where the previous building had been destroyed. So to fully infiltrate that, and then to make the paved surface that's out there both flatter and smaller, we felt that that was appropriate.
Okay. And just one comment to, I'd like to be put on the record, just regarding the infiltration rate used at the CULTEC chambers. I don't know if that's going to be reviewed, but in your stormwater report, you noted it as 8.27 inches per hour, and that is, that exceeds the permissible value by the state stormwater standards of 2.41. That's the max infiltration rate for A soils. So I just want to make sure that that's caught in the revised materials. And that may be picked up by stormwater or engineering, I don't know. And that may be picked up by stormwater or engineering, I don't know. That's all I have. Is there anybody from the public who would like to ask any questions? So we would be looking for a continuance to the June 14 meeting, is that right?
Yes.
This evening? All right, we need a motion to continue this to the June 14 meeting at 7:15. All right, we have a motion by Member Grove. Do we have a second? Second by Member Kent. All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? All right, we'll see you in June.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
The next item on our agenda this evening is a continued public hearing, and this is for Town Council Order Number 22-015, zoning ordinance text amendment to amend Article 18, medical and adult use or non-medical marijuana establishments and related amendments to Section 135-601 and 135-806.
Thank you.
Your face is that way. They have to know who I am. Thank you. So I believe at our last hearing, we had opened up the public hearing and continued this, so we have not take, this is our first evening.
Correct.
Hearing any content on this application. So if the applicant could just introduce themselves and the proposed amendment, that'd be great.
Thank you, thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair Joyce and members of the board. My name is Drew Ledbetter. I'm the Chief Executive Officer of Flower Express. And tonight I just wanted to do an introduction to our business and do a quick business overview, share our proposed changes, and discuss some of the community benefits to our petition. So Flower Express was formed in 2021. We're 100% owned by people of color, majority women-led in owner. We're the leadership team with over 60 years of combined experience. Our mission is really to create a bridge between adult sales cannabis and medical-grade quality cannabis by growing medical-grade cannabis in a consistent, high-tech environment here in the town of Braintree. Our values are integrity, environmental sustainability, community empowerment, fiscal responsibility as well as social equity and social justice. One of the things that we consider advantages is our genetics portfolio with over 100 new strains that are not, have been previously seen in any cannabis market. Of course, our proprietary growing techniques that allows for maximum plant yield with minimal plant touch, as well as some of the partnerships we've established in Massachusetts with certified research organizations and cannabis researchers here in Massachusetts. As an introduction, again, my name is Drew Ledbetter. I was born in South America. I moved to the United States in the 90s. I grew up in the city of Boston and went to Boston Latin School and got a nursing degree about 18 years ago from Boston College and spent majority of my career in the nursing field. About a year ago, I joined the American Cannabis Nurses Association, which is an advocacy group for plant-based medicine. I'm also a member of the Minorities for Medical Marijuana, as well as a cert, cannabis nurses of color as well. And we'll be spending a day at the Capitol this week as well, doing some advocacy for patients. We also have our Chief of Cultivation, Hudders LaFond, he's here with us tonight, and he comes with real estate development experience and investment experience and has helped with our Chief of Science, Adrian Brown, develop our genetics portfolio. Curly Nicholas is our Chief Financial Officer, who is also Boston-raised, has an MBA from University of Arkansas, and works as the Director of Sales for Fortune 250 Company. Our Chief Revenue Officer is a 40-year resident of Braintree, Mark Doucet, and he's here with us tonight as well. He has executive experience in people and revenue generation. Karen Chekon is our Chief Diversity, Equity and Inclusion Officer out of JP and living currently in Marion and serves as an Executive Director of the Latino STEM Alliance, which is a nonprofit organization. Marquise Cohen is our Chief Operating Officer. That comes to us with 20 years of retail experience, the last 15 in high-end retail operations and management. Leslie Pasqual is our Chief Technology Officer with over 17 years of technology experience in highly regulated environments, and she helped roll out the E version of the New Hampshire lottery tickets a few years ago and also worked with Curaleaf as they were building their e-commerce sites. And our Head of Brand and Creatives is Agnieszka Grosso, who comes to us with medical tech and biomed branding experience as well. Cannabis industry in the United States has been growing exponentially. There's currently 13 states that are legal. It is estimated to go up to 15 states by the end of 2022. And 18% of Americans are active marijuana users, and this is a self-reported number. It's up from 10% in 2015. Support for legal marijuana is at an all-time high at 68%. Again, this is a self-reported number, and the US cannabis industry is currently worth $61 billion. There have been some barriers to profitability in the past, but there are things happening like the Safe Banking Act that are creating a better business environment for cannabis business operators. In Massachusetts alone, the market opened up in 2018 and since then has made $2.87 billion in sales. And this is by capturing maybe only 20% of current adult marijuana users in the state. They're saying that marijuana sales are averaging over $3 million per day. One of the things that's an emerging niche in this market is the medical research sector of the cannabis industry. Life science companies are investing big dollars into cannabis research. The NFL's recently invested $1 million to study CBD and cannabis on pain management. Pfizer has spent $6.7 billion in cash acquiring a cannabis research firm, and a lot of research companies are out there really putting their money where their mouth is and spending money in plant-based medicine. So one of the reasons we're here today is because although the cannabis industry is growing, there's a huge profitability gap between medical sales and adult sales, which is recreational, non-medical sales. As you can see, the bottom, the top number is $769.4 million in the last four years, whereas adult-use sales is four times that at $2.87 billion in the same amount of time. Again, as I mentioned, that this is, we track the sales data in real time, so we have visibility to what's happening in the market on a day-to-day basis. And in the month of January alone, $112 million in sales and over $100 million in sales every month thereafter. The licensure process in the state of Massachusetts is quite extensive. Our team has proven that they can get through this licensing process as we all obtained two host-community agreements with the town of Corrine and one with the city of Boston for retail facility. We recently broke ground on our warehouse, aka the barn, over in Corrine, Massachusetts. We have building permits in place. I am a social equity applicant with the Cannabis Control Commission, which allows us for expedited application processing and reduced fees. Also, a woman-owned business, and our business is considered a minority-owned business as well. So we are equipped to produce results and meet all the milestones necessary to achieve licensure. So our request of the zoning board is that we're respectfully requesting that the Town Ordinance, Section 135, Article 17, prohibition of non-medical marijuana establishments is replaced with a new Section 135, Article 18, medical and non-medical marijuana establishments. This would allow for certain types of Cannabis Control Commission licensed marijuana establishments to have business in the highway business and commercial zoning in the town of Braintree. Specifically, we're asking, one, that the Section 135, Article 17, be changed over to Section 135, Article 18, to include medical and adult use or non-medical marijuana establishments. Section 135, 1801, we'd like to propose a change to the wording of the purpose, which, and I have dot dots to kind of remove the wordiness, but essentially the purpose of the section is to allow for Cannabis Control Commission licensed adult use in non-medical marijuana establishments as defined in 135-1802 in the highway business and commercial zoning districts, and that marijuana establishments may be permitted by special permit only in order to impose reasonable conditions, restrictions and set uses to ensure public health, safety and the well-being of the town, and that it's preserved to mitigate against any undue impacts and natural built environment of the town. The next change are the, in the definitions, we'd like to add the definitions to reflect the following, which is the state rules, MGL Chapter 94C, Section 1, and license types also defined by the state regulations in 935 CMR 500. For prohibitions, we'd like to change the existing prohibition from no marijuana establishments shall be permitted in any zoning district to town hereby strictly prohibits in all zoning districts retailers, retail storefronts and all types of onsite sales at a marijuana establishment of any type directly to consumers. So what we're asking is to be able to do business as a warehouse, as a cultivator, but not as a retail location for the town. New sections would be added to reflect the state laws in the ordinances. 135, 1804 would define the special submission requirements, which would have us share our copies of our licenses, business plans, evidence of site control, our security plan, hours of operations and floor plans and such, to be consistent with the Cannabis Control Commission guidelines. 135, 1805 defines that the restrictions of marijuana establishments would include operational mandates as defined by 935 CMR in regard to buffer zones, marketing, delivery hours, advertisement, execution and documentation of a host-community agreement, as well as a review process for all permits and site plants. And the last new section would be 135-1806, which would define special permit criteria. So in addition to the standard findings for a special permit, additional findings would include zoning compliance and compliance with all state laws, meeting all previously stated requirements, and security plans submitted to fire and the police department. In addition, for principal uses in parking, the table of principal use would be updated to include a special permit for marijuana establishments that would only allow, would only be allowed in highway business and commercial zoning via special permit. And scheduled off-street parking would be proposed to match our cultivation facility. So our proposed canopy is 100,000 square feet, which would mean 100 parking spots in non-cultivation areas. We approximate about 5,000 square feet, which would be 20 parking spots, and right now we have plans for over 180 parking spots, which would be more than enough for this proposal. So the location, we currently have found a location that we're securing a letter of intent with, and we wanted to talk about the summary of operations. None of our operations would be community-facing at all. We'd have indoor cultivation and indoor processing with drying rooms, trimming rooms, processing rooms and a vault. We would have product manufacturing, which would have a science lab essentially inside of the manufacturing space, as well as a commercial kitchen and temperature-controlled storage. Our plan is to only create products that will be wholesale sold to other businesses or research organizations. We would not be creating products for other purposes. And also, we would be warehousing for delivery. The delivery operator license type, it's a license type that is exclusively for social equity applicants. Essentially, we would be hosting and finished products, so we would be purchasing product from other retailers and housing it at the warehouse and creating an e-commerce website where people can order. And if they live in a yes town, that order would be delivered directly to that yes town. Braintree is a no-town at the moment, so even if this changes were to be changed, we would not be allowed to deliver here in the town of Braintree. The location that we have found is 280 Irish Street. Have been told it's the Carter Rice Building. It's been vacant for over 30 years almost. It's 90,000 square feet. It is right across from the transfer station. It is not located within 500 feet of public or private schools. We have partnered with Citronics, a leading security vendor in the cannabis space, and they will outfit our warehouse with the right security requirements, meeting the guidelines of the state. There will be no retail sales at the location. It would not be a community-facing operation. It would purely just be transformation of the warehouse. The current state, there's not many trees. We've done kind of a walkthrough in the community and have engaged with some abutters of that area, and one of the things that we're requested is that we add more trees because the tree canopy in District 5 in particular is very low. So we wanted to increase the tree canopy, as well as create a more walkable path to the T station, and just beautify the building and enhance the building, which would also bring additional tax revenue to the town. So our proposed, this is a conceptual rendering. We wanted to provide some images of what the Carter Rice Building may look like in the future. It may not be exactly this rendering at the end. As we all know, we will have to present again. But the change in ordinance, we believe, would have little to no impact on the current use of the zone as it is a business highway zone, as well as a commercial zone, and we would be a commercial facility without any customer or public-facing interactions. The location will also require a special permit, which allows you to have complete discretion in exactly where establishments are allowed and where this establishment, if it's in appropriate use of that land. The location, of course, is across from the transfer station, which is a reason why probably it's been vacant longer than it needed to be, and it wouldn't have any impact on our business, as we would be secure and tight in terms of air tightness and filtration, but we would not add any additional order to the area at all. Other community benefits include, of course, the tax revenue that comes to the town of Braintree. Cannabis excise tax is about 3% of gross revenue. Based on our very conservative projections, we would potentially be bringing over $6 million in annual tax revenue to the town of Braintree. Job creation is another benefit. We are anticipating over 200 jobs and over three workday shifts. There is no minimum education requirement. On-the-job training, as this is a new agricultural sector in this, in this space. We'll also be creating a significant investment in this whole community improvement. If the rest of the city's pulling cart, continue to increase the tree canopy. It would be a fun community. The concern is that we're about to produce a better place for the cannabis business in town. What it was, we'd have deliveries that would be going straight to the highway from that location, and there wouldn't be any deliveries in the town of Braintree, so we wouldn't have any significant traffic impact here in the town. Lighting would be code-conforming to minimize nuisance. We also wanted to develop a comprehensive education plan for the community and support the work of the established addiction and prevention efforts in the community and partner with them to ensure that we are out there and, and forward-facing the community with all their concerns and changing the stigma around plant-based medicine. So our request to Braintree is to allow us to use the highway business zone and commercial zoning areas to, for cultivation, product manufacturing, and home delivery to yes towns and absolutely no retail sales from our company. So we're proposing to have a modern facility, exclusive genetics, and I call the dream team, to come and do business here in the town of Braintree. Thank you for your time. Are there any questions?
Great, thank you so much. And just a reminder to the public, this is a continued public hearing, so the public is able to participate, ask questions, make any comments, and we just ask that you come up to the podium to do so. So please feel free to do that as we discuss amongst the board and also with staff. I note that we do have a staff report, so if Director Santucci-Razi could just review the staff report that she provided to us this evening, and then we'll open it up for questions.
Of course, thank you, Madam Chair. I did provide a report for the two zoning amendments that we have on the agenda this evening. This one, obviously, the medical and adult use non-medical marijuana establishments. As you can see, Drew, did a pretty detailed presentation this evening, sort of highlighting what the changes are. So what we have in place now is Sections 1801, 1802 and 3, and it's essentially a straight-up prohibition on any type of non-medical marijuana, any type of business whatsoever in the town of Braintree. And what's being proposed this evening, and what is included in this, in this draft amendment, is really kind of outlining all of the various types of cannabis businesses, marijuana cannabis, I'll use that term. I'll use that term interchangeably. Connor and I spent quite a bit of time looking at the state regulations and researching different types of facilities, actually watching videos of how these places are constructed and learning quite a bit. There's a lot of different terms, micro-business, production, and those things, and kind of breaking that down, understanding what the flower actually does and the different things that marijuana establishments do with the flower and those various categories that they fall into. And just, again, looking at the ordinance here, defining marijuana obviously is very important. Defining marijuana establishment, noting that there are certain types of businesses called out for in the state guidance and regulations, and we've removed the words referencing any type of retail sales and the social consumption establishments that potentially in a year, two years, would be the marijuana cafes. So that is not allowed in any way, anywhere in the town of Braintree. Then we have a definition for the marijuana delivery operator and delivery operator, independent testing lab, licensee, marijuana manufacturer, micro-business products, the processing, research facility, transporter, marijuana for medical use, and medical marijuana treatment center. So on the non-medical side, we have specified in the use table... Just get to that page. The marijuana retailers, which as you can see is a straight-up N, which means no. And then we have the marijuana establishments, which could be any type of cultivation, processing. Drew had explained a variety of different things that they'll be doing at their proposed location if this, in fact, goes forward and they can secure that location. But there are other types of businesses out there that would be purchasing product and using that and processing and making other goods in different types of marijuana, products that include marijuana in them. And then we have the third category, which is the medical marijuana treatment center, which currently in Braintree is not prohibited, and it's also not defined in detail, and it's not regulated. So if somebody was to come to the town of Braintree today, they would essentially, and they had a medical marijuana treatment center, which is sales directly to consumers with a medical card, that would actually be classified as retail. So what this ordinance does is it clearly defines the various types of establishments. It clearly restricts retail sales onsite of any type, and it also allows for a site plan review for medical marijuana treatment centers as well. So we could be faced with situations, as we know, our site plan review threshold is an addition of 500 square feet, and if, in fact, there was a medical marijuana treatment center, again, which today would just go pull a building permit if they were in a zone that allowed for retail, it enables myself, as the director of planning and community development, and the building inspector, to do administrative site plan review and make sure all the components of this proposed ordinance is addressed also on the medical side. So looking at this, I did prepare a staff report, but what I like about it is it's very clear on what is what and what is allowed, and it also goes above and beyond, and it has restrictions for these types of uses. And it also has additional special permit criteria above and beyond what we would evaluate for a typical use permit. So I think it's, you know, fairly, very well-written. I think that it's clear. I think it eliminates the ambiguity now with having the medical marijuana as a retail use. And I think, frankly, that it provides for an opportunity for individuals in the program... Excuse me, Drew, the name of the program that the state has now, the...
The Social Equity Program?
Yes, the Social Equity Program for those individuals that are able to participate in that program, to have an opportunity to do something here in the community. And something that we typically don't look at in super detail, but we do take into effect from time to time economics, and it seems like these types of businesses provide a lot of economic benefit to the communities in which they're located in. So I'm available, obviously, for any questions. I didn't want to read directly from the report, but in summary or in drawing out it a little bit longer, that's essentially what my report entails. I'm sure there'll be some questions from the public this evening and also from the board, and depending on how those comments are addressed this evening or not addressed, the staff would recommend forwarding a favorable recommendation to the town council. We also received comments, I did circulate this text, to the fire chief and the police chief, from a public safety standpoint in both realms, different style of building and what goes on in there, different styles of equipment, and they both provided responses that they have no objections to the proposed language. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much. And I think you mentioned it, but just as a reminder to the board and those in the audience, this is currently before town council, which sent it to us for our recommendation. So this evening, we're just looking to make a recommendation to town council where it will be discussed further.
Correct.
Again, this is a public hearing, so if anybody from the public wants to come up and provide any commentary or ask any questions, please feel free to do so. I understand that there was a neighborhood meeting with the district counselor. I think, was that outcome of that meeting provided to staff? I don't think, I think there was, you had mentioned, the applicant had mentioned a community meeting. Were you referring to the meeting held by the district counselor?
Yes, last week, we met with District 5 of Butters at the library across the street.
Okay. All right, so I guess maybe she'll be submitting that.
I haven't seen that, Madam Chair. And I do want to just mention one other thing. We did receive some comments today from a native son cannabis. Excuse me, I do see one of their representatives here, and they provided comment that they would like us to look at some of the definitions and add in the retail pot and the social consumption cafes. Again, that isn't something that I would be supporting this evening. They would also like the restrictions on the signage that's in the ordinance changed. Again, you know, the idea is not to be overly advertising of these types of businesses. We want to make sure that the wholesalers and people buying the product know where this location is. But again, there are no, there's no reason for anybody driving down the street to go, "Oh, I can go in here," because there's nothing for them to do in there. Everybody will be by appointment, and they'll be making deliveries as well. And the other thing that they referenced was removing the administrative site plan review on businesses that wouldn't trigger site plan review. Again, that's not something that we're interested in doing at this time. And then also, changing the hours of operation. Right now, we have... No, the text right now closed at 10:00, can't open until 8:00 in the morning, and they're suggesting additional hours. So we thank them for their comments, and if there's any kind of questions, again, there is a representative here this evening. But we're really trying to, or at least in reviewing this, I'm trying to look at the components of these types of businesses that will not, that will have very little opportunity to provide any type of negative impacts to the community. So, thank you.
Great, thank you. With that, I'll open it up to the board for comments. Member McComey, do you have any comments, questions, or concerns?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So to the director, to be clear, what we're looking at tonight is a recommendation vote.
Correct.
And this is currently under discussion in the town council.
The council, once the planning board makes their recommendation, they will refer to the Ways and Means, which could hold a series of meetings, excuse me, ordinance and rules. And then, once they've concluded the subcommittee, then it will go to the full council that will actually vote on the language.
Okay. So the first thing, if I recall correctly, there was a referendum vote in the town, which basically passed, if you want to call it that, and said that no marijuana establishments, retail or wholesale, will be allowed. So I don't recall how long ago, long ago that was, but the thing that, you know, however long ago, the vote was taken and the voice was heard. So that's just something that I would have to weigh if I was looking at this. Another comment would be, could you, Ms. Ledbetter, tell us what are the direct economic benefits to the town of Braintree? I see here there's a cannabis excise tax, excise tax of 3% of gross revenue. Does that mean that the town keeps all that? How does that work?
The town does keep all of that. So there's a 3% excise tax that's imposed on the business, and it's on gross sales, and it's a top number. There's also the improvements that we're doing to the building will increase the value of the business, the building, so will also increase the tax revenue for that building as well. With our, we don't own the building, we'll be paying rent and taxes, so that would be a direct economic impact as well. And a part of our Positive Impact Plan, which is a requirement of the Cannabis Control Commission, would be to create a philanthropic fund here in the town of Braintree, where we put a percentage of our profits, so that we can have a board of Braintree residents or create a board, and essentially, they will decide where this money goes to benefit either playgrounds, schools, education, and beautification of the town.
Okay. And, you know, there's various analyses which show profitability. So overall, if I can ask, what sort of profitability will Flower Express experience?
Hopefully, a lot of it.
Also, for example, what would your gross revenues be, and what would you keep in terms of margin?
In terms, I can't go into a lot of detail in terms of margin. Our CFO is actually not here, and I don't want to speak out of turn, but gross revenue, we're thinking close to $200 million in gross revenue, and the margins are fair, because it's cultivation and there's tax implications, such as Code 280E. So there's, profitability is not as great as we would like it to be because of the taxation and the federal illegality of the plant, but it's definitely a fruitful business.
Okay. So there's the excise tax, and then there's other taxes or payments that you have to make to state and federal government?
Yeah, you're a business tax as well. So state has a tax, and we don't have the sales tax, because we're not selling anything directly to consumers. But the delivery would face the sales tax, but it wouldn't, I think the sales tax would actually come back to Braintree, interestingly enough, even though we can't deliver in Braintree.
Okay.
And I can get the actual facts around that from our CFO.
Okay. I think that's all I have, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Member Crowe, any comments or questions?
Yes, thank you. And I will just follow in up on Member McComey's note. This topic came up at a Braintree chamber meeting that we had a few months ago, just based on a question that wasn't a topic up for discussion, and we had talked about the vote and what that meant going forward. And there were probably 20, 25 people in the room, so a small subset, but the response was, I won't say overwhelmingly, but for the most part, almost unanimously positive with respect to the cultivation and an enclosed business such as this. But I do encourage people who are watching or hear about this to get involved with the town council and additional comments, because I do think that that's a question that's worth exploring on a town-wide basis. But as you very clearly demonstrate in your presentation, it's a big money business, and it is providing a lot of revenue for the towns. And where Braintree has its own electric company, there's additional benefits that could come in with respect to the usage there. I do have a couple of comments on the language of the zoning and one question from the use. I was curious, your other cultivation center that's under construction, what licenses did you obtain from the Cannabis Commission for that?
So cultivation, manufacturing, and a delivery operator, same business structure. So we're pretty consistent in our alignment.
Okay. Okay, thank you for the presentation. That was very comprehensive, very helpful. Two somewhat minor comments on the language of the proposal itself. One was, there are some other towns that have residential buffers built into the bylaw also, and I was wondering if that had been looked at or would suggest that that be looked at. Some of them use 100 feet, some use more or less, but I know that we're looking at this building, and it seems the location of this building, I don't see any issue, but once the bylaw's on the books, it applies to anyone in those zoning districts, so that might be something to think about if there's any residential uses that are inside those districts.
Yeah, I think, and Drew, jump in if I'm wrong, I believe the state is a 500-foot setback.
And that's for private and public schools.
Oh, okay.
For not, but not for residential. But most commercial districts, surprisingly enough, are not very close to residential districts. And I'm not sure how many of the highway business and commercial districts in Braintree would be close to residence. I didn't look into that, but we can.
Yeah, that would just, just the presentation earlier tonight with the pork dealerships being surrounded around a house, they're just, they sometimes happen and we don't think about them, so it might be something to consider if a bylaw gets put on the books. The other comment that I had was...
Quickly, Member Crowe, would you like me to, like, look into that and provide some, if we do forward a recommendation, would you like me to include some language about that as an amendment?
That would be my preference. And the other comment, the definition, the proposed definition of marijuana establishment seems like having a different name to it in the bylaw might be helpful, since the Cannabis Commission includes retail in their definition of marijuana establishment. And it just seems like there might, it's clear what we're doing here with the bylaw to not allow retail, but there might be some confusion in the back and forth.
Yeah, and it's like, do you, you know, when they were drafting, it's like, do you mirror exactly because you want things to match up, or do you vary?
Okay. Let me think about how... Those are the only two comments, or however many I said. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Member Crowe. Member Grove, do you have any comments or questions?
Yes, ma'am. Melissa, was public safety consulted at all about the zoning bylaw?
Yes, I just, I gave testimony earlier that the police chief and the fire chief provided comments and support.
And they are in our pile someplace?
They're right here. So we have Chief Dubois, after reviewing the proposed application, the police department does not oppose the changes. And then Chief O'Brien. Chief O'Brien, no objections from the fire department. Chief O'Brien.
Yep, okay, thank you.
Are you all set, Member Grove? Thank you. Member Kent, any comments or questions?
In the comment category, it's apparent that this has come a long ways since the days of ultraviolet light in the closet of a dorm room. I'm concerned a bit about security, proximity to the tee, proximity to Route 3 was a big problem for the Motel 6 that was down the street. And so what are, what are your thoughts around security in this type of facility?
I actually have our security vendor, so Andy, are you open to come up? I actually have our security vendor, so Andy, are you open to come up and answer that? Thank you.
How you doing tonight? My name's Andrew Wilder, I'm with, uh, Cetronics Security. My company's been in business since 1969, we're based out of Billricka. I've been in the industry for 35 years, started off with a big company, but now I'm with Cetronics. We do over, probably 14 or 15 manufacturing cultivation locations right now, anywhere from 100,000 square feet to 20,000 square feet. We do retail locations, dispensaries, we do probably over 50 of those. Security under the, uh, 935 CMR 500 is pretty strict. They expect, uh, over 95% of the inside of the building to be protected by cameras, access control, intrusion system, even intercom. Uh, the only things that are not covered are bathrooms and locker rooms, uh, but everything else is covered. On the outside of the building, which is what you're referring to, um, also, a good buffer zone is somewhere 100 feet to, to 150 feet, all entrances, like driveways, or, where cars come in or trucks come in, are, uh, under camera surveillance. There are also, the cameras are, um, high, um, 4K, top-of-the-line cameras with vivid, uh, imaging, they have IR, which is infrared, so if the lighting is not particularly good, it still will pick up images of people, animals, um, objects. Color might be distorted during lighting, but I'm sure the, we work with lighting with the, the Town of Braintree, other towns, to make sure that the areas of walkways, uh, out to parking lots are covered, so that there's no, uh, riffraff, uh, or, or any particular trouble. Uh, so, the MBTA or stations of that, we would work with you, we do have high-powered cameras that can go a mile, half a mile, and can, you know, get a pimple off your nose, so we can get that, if we need be, uh, so we can do all that, but, um, those areas are covered. Uh, with trees in respect to some of the landscaping, they do try to, under CCC regulations, minimize the, uh, amount of trees and foliage and, and bushes and things of that, so that people cannot hide behind those type of objects. Um, with access, with trucks coming in, things of that nature, gates are protected by access control, uh, and, and so that they are, um, you know, they protect the area, so that now any car or truck can come in, uh, because there's access control, there's also intercom that, uh, protect, to keep the people out, and only like, uh, uh, the right trucks come in, the right vehicles come in, and people of the age under 21 do not enter these facilities. So, um, they're well-protected, um, under the, the guidelines, uh, regulations, and we would submit a, uh, propose, uh, a site security plan to Public Safety, Town of Braintree, sit down with the Chief of Police, also protect it with fire, sit down with the Chief of, uh, the Fire Chief, and make sure that he and they agree with the plan that is presented to the town, and, and the council can also review this. The only problem with that, in a public, we want to keep some of those items away from the, the public of where, uh, cameras and things of that are, because of public safety. Um, so, there, those are reviewed by the, I go in front of the police chief and the fire chief to present these, uh, with the customer. So, when it comes to security, uh, also, I might mention that the, uh, police chief and their dispatch have access to the, uh, systems through remote capability that we set up with our IT people and their IT people, so that on any type of emergency, they can look into it, uh, on their way to the property. And, uh, so those are in the regulations, and we do work with the public safety people, so. Uh, are there any questions on security?
Thank you.
All right, sorry to-
Very helpful.
Go through that, yes.
To what extent is this facility going to create an extra burden upon our, uh, police and fire, uh, abilities? What, what have you seen in your experience?
Through my experience, there will be very limited, um, exposure on the public safety, because of, it's not a retail establishment, it's a manufacturing establishment, where you do not have the public entering this facility, um, and, uh, through the gates and other, uh, you know, uh, with trucks and things, but through the gates, the, the, any public or any type of person is not going to be able to get in to this establishment at all, um, because it's not, uh, it's not a retail type of, uh, operation, so the public is not, there's no signs really going to be on there, maybe on the building, but they're not going to know what it is unless they really investigate it, but very limited exposure.
Don't know what it is, but-
They will.
Thank, I appreciate your comment.
But, so it's limited exposure.
Limited scope, okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Oh, yes, um, Member Connolly would, uh, to the security expert, all right, get you back up there, thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry about that.
Not a problem. Um, my question was to ask for greater clarity as far as, for security, what is remote and what would be in-person in terms of overnight guards and things of that nature?
Um, so overnight guards, uh, that would have to be, I don't do the guard service, but I do do the, um, you know, setting up the systems, so the cameras are always running, 24/7. Uh, remote capability is when you can go through an app and through computers, workstations, like the dispatch or the public safety, they can always look into those cameras live, and they can go in recording too. So, they have 24/7, um, video or viewing of the whole operation, uh, and they can be limited on cameras, um, you know, so like vaults and money operations, we can keep those away from the public safety, they don't need those, but through the exterior of the building and some interior areas, public safety would be able to see those 24/7. Guards and things of that, that would be set up under, with the customer, there's generally, they could shut down depending on hours of operation, no one's going to be there, so there would be no guards unless that is, you know, talked about within the council and the customer, so there could be guards. Generally, guards are on the retail, uh, area where of, of operation, there are guards there whenever they're open from 8:00 AM to 10:00 PM, uh, Monday through Sunday, uh, but in a, in a manufacturing facility, generally, um, they're not guards there, because most area, all the manufacturers inside, the only time a guard might be there is if there's a big delivery coming or something of that. Um, there's generally, there are always a two, two people in a truck, um, pretty much under the, the guidelines, uh, so there's a driver and a, and a, and another, um, assistant, so, um, there's usually two people, but there's no guard, uh, per se, in a manufacturing on, on a regular basis.
And is the monitoring of the cameras, is that done on-site or remotely by your team?
No, it can be done by, uh, it's not on-site, actually, there's a remote capability, so you could be in a rube, and you could see these cameras. The police can also see these cameras, the dispatch from their, the police department, so you can see these cameras, uh, depending on where it's set up, through proper, um, IT, you know, credentials, uh, you can see these cameras, um, 24/7.
And how actively would they be monitored?
Um, they are actively monitored, uh, it, it's during like the nighttime or something, uh, they would not be monitored unless there's something happened, so that you can put in, um, some, uh, set, uh, motion, um, criteria, where if something goes, a camera does get, um, with motion, it can be sent to your phone, or it can be sent to the police station, and they can see if it's an animal, or if it's a person, or a truck, or something came into view, it can then be viewed in a text message, and then you can re, review the video. So, those can be set up in programming of the system, uh, but it doesn't have to be monitored, um, like a car dealership would be monitored probably by another, outside my company or some other company could monitor those, uh, on a periodic basis, because people stealing tires and they just want to go in and see them. In this case, it might be set up, it might not be, but you can put those protocols of motion into someone's, uh, text message or something to have them look at it, just in case something might be going on.
Okay, and could you or your client, um, discuss what other security might be brought in? It sounds that your company wouldn't provide guards and things like that, do you anticipate that, Ms. Ledbetter?
Yeah, I was going to jump in after, um, I was going to say, from the operational standpoint, we anticipate that we would have security on-site at least the first 90 days to ensure that all operations are going well, again, it's a closed operation system, it's a warehouse, so it's, imagine like, uh, if it was a paper mill, nobody would be coming in and out, um, still, so it would, we anticipate that kind of activity. Um, our warehouse manager would be kind of housed in an office that has visibility to all the cameras at all times, that we have hours of operation, that's something that we will also have in place. In terms of the delivery operators, as Andy mentioned, um, all drivers, there has to be two drivers per vehicle, they both will be wearing body cam vests, it'll be, and the vehicle will be outfitted with front and rear and security cameras for the storage as well. And these are all per regulations.
Thank you.
No worries, thank you.
Thank you, Member Connolly. Member Kent, did you have any comment, other comments or questions outside of the security?
I'm all set, thank you.
Okay. Member Connolly, did you have other questions you'd like to ask?
Um, I want to thank you for a very thoughtful and comprehensive, uh, presentation tonight, and then, um, as far as, uh, for our committee, I do want to, um, include the amendment for the residential buffer, I think that's important, thank you.
Again, thank you so much for the presentation, um, I guess as a follow-up to some of the commentary on residential buffers, is that going to be something that would be, I guess, further discussed at Town Council? Is there examples of, um, I guess, buffers that would be applicable, and I'm thinking more along the lines of future development of this corridor, and what the outcome of that will be in the future, and just trying to balance, I guess, the presence of a potential facility like this that would have buffers associated with it for future development, so I don't know what that, where that discussion ends up, but if, um, do you have, yep, go ahead.
Yeah, uh, Madam Chair, if I may, just kind of listening and taking my notes here, um, I have offset to retail, uh, included language research this, so I would, I would, I would just look in some other communities and, and maybe provide that information to the council, so-and-so does this, this one does this, just to get an idea, people might be familiar with those communities in different locations, um, and then also be more clear with the non-retail, and the, to Member, uh, Crowe's comment about the marijuana establishments, you know, just kind of, I was thinking as other people are talking, and, and we could just say, "non-retail marijuana establishments," we could, we could, we could put that, something like that in there to make it a little bit stronger, I mean, it is, it's evident that it's not, but it does get confusing, because, you know, every, and in our research, everybody mirrors the, the CMAs, so we mirror that, but then we say, "no social consumption and no retail establishments," because those are marijuana establishments, so, um, unless somebody else has some other creative solution, um, just simply adding "non-retail" to marijuana's, before marijuana establishments throughout the entire text, would be.
All right, um, the, uh, Member McComme, you had another question, and I want to, Member Grove, you had a co, chance to comment yet? All right.
I just asked the, the Director, um, so, you know, we have our electronic billboard, uh, zone, and we can only have so many electronic billboards, so what happens if Flower Express is so successful, they want to put in five more locations in Braintree? What, what, what do we do? Or six other people like, like what they see? Are we going to have a limit here? Are we going to, how are we going to, how are we going to c, control that?
Um, I, we don't have a limit, again, the overlay, the billboard overlay is just, you know, half of one street, so obviously, you don't want to have one on every single property, so looking at the town as a whole, the commercial districts and the highway business districts, um, there's no real crystal ball to determine, you know, who's going to come and at what time, and that's when the, um, the special permit criteria would really come into play, if, if the town felt as though, um, we were getting to a point, we have all, the, the special criteria that's proposed in this, plus our regular special permit criteria, which takes into effect, uh, the economic impact on the district. So, if we ended up with a cluster of these, that would obviously not be something that, um, it would be wonderfully economic for us, but really not something I think that would be palatable, uh, we'll take the billboard overlay, for example, you don't want a billboard on every single property, same thing, we don't want, you know, a particular street to have multiple, um, types of the same business, and I think that's kind of for every business, if you think about it, kind of want things spread out a little bit, so that different areas of town can, can get benefit from the variety of uses. So, I think that that's something, um, that this board, uh, as the Special Permit Granting Authority, um, would be tasked with determining. This particular language does not, um, introduce a cap, um, and I don't, I, we've done some, quite a bit of research, I don't know if we've seen a cap, but that's something that, if the board wants us to look into, we can, um, look into that. Some communities have done overlays, and then again, with the overlay, you see, you know, um, eh, more restrictions, um, other communities, um, have, you know, again, they say 500, like, they need to be offset 500 feet, but 500 feet is not very much distance, I mean, you could have one, have an empty lot, and then have another one, so, um, I haven't really, you know, um, thought about that.
Yeah, it's just a thought.
Yeah.
Hello, sorry, I was going to add, um, there's actually a buffer zone conflict for, between marijuana establishments, so you can't have two than a half mile of each other, so that would create a buffer at the state level.
That's a state law.
Yeah. So, the 500 feet is for private and public schools, and, um, the half a mile is for other marijuana establishments.
Okay, thank you.
Is that it? Thank you. Um, Member Grove, sorry to skip you earlier, um, do you have any comments or questions?
No, ma'am.
Okay. I don't have any further comments or questions, is there anybody from the audience who wishes to comment or ask any questions of the applicant? Great, thank you, come on up, just if you could state your name and address for the record.
Um, Lynn Gavin, 14 Perry Road, and one of my questions, as you're talking about trucks and deliveries, how many trucks are going out? I can't even go to Home Goods now.
And it, and I think just to add, just one comment on that, the current thing that we're discussing tonight is just the bylaw, um, the zoning bylaw amendment that would allow for this future use, and then this applicant would then have to come before us with a specific project, I think they're kind of sharing with us their intent, but to address like specifics to the project, that would come when we had a specific one in front of us, um, I don't know if the applicant wants to speak, um, you know-
You don't have to tonight.
Generically, but I will just note that for the record.
Okay, thanks.
Yep, thank you for coming up.
We'll be glad to answer, uh, for deliveries, we're thinking of starting with five vehicles, and it would be next-day deliveries, so we would have the cars go out in the morning and come back in the evening, and those would be regular vehicles, like Ford Escapes, um, they wouldn't be truck-delivery vehicles, we are hoping to have, we've partnered with the Eagle Eye Transport-
We are hoping to have, we've partnered with the Eagle Eye Transport, which is a Cannabis Control Commission certified transporting company. They don't have 18-wheeler trucks. We would be planning deliveries for after hours or early morning hours before businesses are open to minimize the nuisance to the community.
Thank you for that. I'm not seeing any more public comment. We heard a lot of comments this evening from board members and the public and the applicant. So I don't know if anybody on the board feels inclined to make a recommendation, but if you would like to, we can entertain that or if there's another recommendation for what we should do. Feel free.
Proposed recommendation or proposal to recommend the bylaw be approved with the aspects we discussed tonight, changing the definition of marijuana establishment in the bylaw to non-retail marijuana establishment and adding in proposed section 135 hyphen 1805, an appropriate residential buffer to be reviewed in more detail.
Just a question to Vice Chair Crowa. Detailing out some different communities and what they do when providing that to the council, is that for them to have some future dialogue? Is that acceptable?
I think that makes sense. And then for Chair Joyce's comment with respect to future residential development and how that fits in, my thought was if it goes into 1805, it's specific to a special permit that comes in for a marijuana establishment, but it wouldn't necessarily prohibit residential from coming in after the marijuana was there.
Right. And just to clarify, are you referencing a residential use offset or a residential zone offset?
A resident, I think a residential use would make more sense insofar as they, sometimes they just pop up randomly in the commercial and highway business districts.
So if the marijuana establishment is there, then a house comes next door, that's the house's issue. If there's one there, got it.
Okay.
Just want to make sure I'm clear so I can provide what's being requested.
Member Connolly, does that sound along the lines of what you were looking to see?
It was, could you provide a distinction between the two options that you provided as far as the residential use and zoning?
One more time, I'm sorry, I missed the beginning part.
Could you clarify between the two options that you provided between residential use and the zoning?
So sometimes we have, so we have residential, we have, you know, single families and residents be, and then we get multi-family in some of the commercial and highway business districts. For example, Jonathan's Landing is zoned highway business, is a residential use. And then from time to time, you'll get a house that's non-conforming, maybe in a commercial district or something like that. So we have different sections of our ordinance that have buffers to zoning district lines. And I just wanted to be clear if we're going to do it to a district or we're going to do it to a use.
And the use would be the greater of the two, the greater protection to the?
Yes, the use to a residential use and what I would characterize there is like the property boundary. Does that make sense? Yep. That would be more protective.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right, we have a motion for a favorable recommendation by Member Crowa. Do we have a second? We have a second by Member Kent. Just to confirm, voting members will be, Member Connolly's still an alternate member. She would not have to vote on this, or do you want her to vote on this?
Nope, just the five.
Okay, great, thank you.
For this one.
All right, so we have a motion by Member Crowa and a second by Member Kent. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
All right, we have four votes, four and one vote against a favorable recommendation.
And that was Member Crowa and Member Kent?
Correct.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, just procedurally, with that vote, can you just vote to close the hearing?
Oh, yes.
Thank you.
We do need a motion to close the public hearing, which we should have taken before the vote, but. So moved by Member Grove. Do we have a second? A second by Member Kent. All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? All right, thank you for that. The next item on our agenda is a continued public hearing for Town Council Order Number 22-012, zoning ordinance text amendment. This is pertaining to new section 135-616, inclusionary housing and amendments to various sections of 135, the mayor as our applicant. And we have, let's see. Okay, sorry about that. We do have, we do have a brief update from the Director. If you could please share and then we can see what comments are floating around.
Yes, I'd love to, Madam Chair. So again, in regards to Council Order 22012, which inclusionary housing, it includes various amendments to a variety of sections as well as creating a new section. The planning staff's been spending some time doing a variety of research and speaking to Mayor Kokoris, who submitted this petition and in discussions. I've made some suggestions that I reach out to the local development community. I think I had mentioned this at one of our previous meetings. And that's what I would like to do. I haven't had an opportunity to do that yet. We've got a few things going on in the lower level, as I'd like to call it, but I'd like to try to do that before the June meeting. Local Braintree residents that are residential developers of all different types and the staff requests, if the Chair is available, that she participate in the meeting as well just to have a second set of ears in trying to gather some information. I do have concerns about the feasibility and the financial implications of the text, which I know some members of the board do as well. So let's talk to the people that do this for a living and figure out what's going to work and make sense for Braintree. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Great, thank you for that update. And I just want to note, we have received several comments, comment letters from the public. Several are form letters, but nonetheless signed by various members of the community. And we have received a couple of letters in favor of the development of housing. And I think we've spent, I know personally I've spent a lot of time combing through this and thinking about this and with the goal of creating housing and as such, hopefully affordable housing, I think, you know, we really want to make sure that we get it right. We did have kind of a failed effort of a comprehensive zoning rewrite prior to, I guess that was 2019, 2018. So I think, and that facilitated this master plan, which is underway and hopefully many of you will participate in the community outreach happening. But I think we need to get it right. I am a little bit hesitant in holding just a meeting with the development community. I think that that conversation does need to be heard about the financial impacts of what this bylaw is and whether it will produce housing. I know there's a lot of public concern that we're not transparent in those discussions and I just, I would be a little concerned that if that meeting happened to facilitate changes that were, any changes, I guess, that that would be something that the public felt was transparent in nature. So, but I think that is absolutely something that we need to look into and we do have to open the discussion up to every involved party. This is a continued public hearing, so if anybody from the public wishes to provide any commentary, ask any questions, as we kind of talk through this as a board this evening, please feel free. Not seeing any at this time. I will ask Member McComey if he has any additional comments or thoughts on the update from staff or moving forward.
Not really, Madam Chair. I agree with you. As I've said before, this needs more study. So I'll leave it at that.
Okay. Member Crowa, do you have any comments or questions, anything you'd like to add?
Thank you. I do agree. I think that it needs more study and I think that that is happening in the context of the master plan. And it feels a little bit to me, which aligns with some of the things that I've said in the past, that it feels a little bit like this is putting the cart before the horse. And we're now at the time when the horse is off and running. We have the master plan process firmly underway and a lot of things happening. And it's an important conversation and it's being had on a lot of levels, both in small groups, both in resident to resident, business to business. And I think that it's really important. There were a lot of public comments received and letters and the overwhelming response from those is that it is important for Braintree to look at affordable housing, both just as a matter of Braintree planning, but also clearly as a matter of 40B planning and reaching and maintaining a 10% level. And I think that that goes along with what the purposes of the bylaw are, to promote housing. But there's, and I've said before and I'll say again, there's nothing in the bylaw that does anything to really promote housing in and of itself. It promotes affordability as a component of any housing projects that come along, but it doesn't change any of the density or overlays or any of the other things that might be something to consider when we talk about promoting housing. And so from my perspective, I think that that needs to be a broader conversation than what is the right percentage and how do we figure out what the exact ratio and unit number levels are. I think that it needs to be more of a comprehensive overview. The mayor's office has done a great job with adding affordable housing in Braintree. There is the three projects that are listed as the introduction to the bylaw, Windjammer, 44 Allen and Hancock Street. And all those are adding 133 units and none of those fit anywhere in the standard Braintree density that's allowed. The Windjammer project, there's 72 affordable units that were created by Braintree, essentially buying a component of affordability to get the whole project to count for affordable units as rental projects do. But if that was developed under the standard Braintree zoning, it would allow 31 units instead of 72. And 44 Allen Street was under a landing overlay and that allowed 56 units of really a diverse level of affordability. And when we talk about affordability, it's not necessarily low income. The 40B affordability, which is actually some of the higher level, is an 80% threshold. It's not a particularly low level. So we're talking about people who are working and providing a lot of services for Braintree who might be buying some of those, or in that case, renting some of those units. But if that project had been zoned under the base density, it would have allowed 19 one-bedroom units instead of the 56 units. And similarly, the Hancock Street project where we have five units would have, that was permitted with variances to allow 30 units and under our standard density, it would have been a third of that, it would have been 10. And so I just think that it's very important that we look at this in the context altogether. My preference would be to just recommend that the town council either sends it out for a study or waits on it or while the master plan progresses and we have an opportunity to look at where residential units in Braintree make sense. Makes sense from a town perspective, makes sense from a walkability perspective. And that the bylaw either be withdrawn during that period or whatever the context is with the town council, but that that's a conversation that is undertaken. The other point that I'll just make, and I'm not sure with 133 units where those stand, but a housing production plan also provides safe harbor and it depends if you do half a percent or 1% of your affordable units. But if we were able to do a housing production plan before those units became certified, that could achieve safe harbor, safe harbor regardless of the 10%. So I think there's more of a broader conversation that should be looked at than this precise bylaw when we look at it. And it has been nine months and I don't know the amount of time that I have spent looking at this and I would hate to count it because it's a lot. But I would rather see this go into a bigger review or be withdrawn similar to how the comprehensive zoning underwrite was withdrawn while the master plan process proceeds, which was the vote three years ago, that the master plan would happen before any large zoning changes with respect to these bigger questions that came up with residential during that process were decided upon.
Thank you. Thank you for your time and commentary on that. I know you have spent a great deal of time looking at many aspects of it, so thank you. Member Grove, do you have any comments, questions?
Yes, ma'am. A question of a misintention, Rosie. Do you have any idea why the mayor pulled it back last week?
Do I what?
Do you have any idea?
For the council and in discussing with Sue Semino, the clerk of the council, they advertised and opened the hearing and they're just continuing it and waiting for us.
Okay. Yep. To me, and this is just my own thought, but it feels like there's a lot of more information and work to be done. Some of the, some of the letters we received talk about amendments, potential amendments that residents don't feel amendments are appropriate. So how do we ensure that we keep that participation the most transparent and public? How do we, like, is it a forum to have it here? Like, I'm just concerned that it's going to get lost in the process.
Right, I understand. So, you know, there's, as the Director of Planning and Community Development, I meet with people all day, every day. That's, you know, my job. If I had offered, you know, Member Joyce, if you wanted to participate, if you don't want to participate, I'm still going to hold these meetings and I will, I can record them. I can have Louise, you know, in the room. I can have Connor there to, you know, record the information and share that with the board. I can tell you that in talking to a lot of different people, especially during the comprehensive rezone, there was a lot of people that liked the plan, but they didn't want to come out and speak. And I think this board sees it nine out of 10 times. Most of the people that provide commentary is in the negative. Very infrequently do we have people coming and supporting projects. They like the projects, they want the projects, but they don't take the time to come and provide that commentary. And, you know, in these discussions, there's a lot of people that come in and out of the office, call us questions, variety of different projects. And there were some people that were like, "Oh, I'm not going to call them, you know, I'm scared, frankly, I'm scared to speak in public." So as the staff, I would like to understand this more and by speaking to people that do this for a living, I think is going to give a much better understanding. The information that Member Crowa recited tonight, yes, it's very, very restrictive and the underlying zoning is also very restrictive. And the projects that she recited worked because of, they were in the overlay. Windjammer was built a long time ago. They probably went to the zoning board of appeals. We didn't look back that far, but there's a lot of different reasons and there's a lot of, I've been doing quite a bit of research. I researched projects going back to 2004, made a list of them so I can get an understanding like where are we, what kind of developments. I have all kinds of different data and statistics and whatnot that I've been putting together over the last two decades. And all of those projects, except for two, or let me flip it, there's two that meet the ordinance requirements. All the other ones were either in overlay, went to the zoning board of appeals, they were 40B. So there has been no consistent application of our multi-family ordinance because people seek other avenues. And those avenues are approved by this board, in some instances, by the zoning board of appeals in other instances. So from a planner... So from a planner's perspective, and when you look at an ordinance, if you continue to see the same section being varied from, whether it's a variance, whether it's pursuing an alternate permitting mechanism, which would be 40B, that is an indicator that there's something not working in that particular section. So I am sensitive to the comments this evening. And my goal is to get as much data and provide as much data as I can to this board and to recommend something that is going to work for Braintree. Housing is not one size fits all. Affordable housing is not one size fits all. And I think it's important to have something that works and it's going to in fact produce units. That's the whole goal of an inclusionary ordinance, to produce inclusionary units.
Do you have any sense, given just that the fact that the master plan is underway and a lot of the thoughts was that master plan first before any zoning bylaw amendments come before town council? Do you have any sense for why this particular one is being pushed forward ahead of the master plan?
I don't want to speak for Mica Coras. He wasn't able to be here with us this evening. But we're very, very close and it's important. You know, Kim had spouted off a couple of the numbers and one of the projections I did for one meeting about something relative to this. And, you know, to be that close and to sort of have that stacked up and to see that 10% sort of flashing over the horizon is something that I think as a community, we have a responsibility to make sure that we maintain. The same thing happened back in the middle 2000s. And I'm not going to rehash what went on, but being very young and coming to this community going, you guys are like so close to 10%, you're going to lose this. And I took that very seriously and took that on as a very young, new planner to town. I didn't know all the people that I know now and have the relationships that I have. And it wasn't supported. So that happened then. Let's not do the same thing again. Let's be critical of it. Let's be responsible. And let's get as much information that we can so that in making a recommendation, whatever that might be, we have more of a foundation and understanding of how we can either improve the text, modify the text, vote favorably, vote unfavorably, whatever the will of the board is. I just think that that information is, and the more information that we get from the right people is really going to be helpful in the decision-making and also in my guidance that I provide to the board.
Okay. So is there anybody from the public that would like to speak? I do not see anyone. I guess I will, you know, leave it up to the board with what we want to do with this. I think it is beneficial that if this does stay on our agenda and we do have further discussions, if there's anything offline to the extent that that can be either recorded and kept published so people can see that, I think that's helpful, but I don't know, I don't know whatever the board prefers to do. Does anybody have anything they'd like to? All right. We have a motion by Member Grove to continue this discussion over to the June 14th meeting. I guess we advertise it at 7:15. Do we have a second? A second by Member Kent. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those against? All right, we will discuss this again next month.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
The next item on our agenda is 357 and 365 Grove Street Site Plan Review File Number 22-02. Liberty Grove LLC is the applicant. I'm actually going to just request a quick break for the board members to just get up, stretch their legs, and we will come back in just a couple moments. Doesn't want anyone to know who he is.
My son had to shave because...
All right. We'll get underway in about one minute here. They shouldn't have given that to me. I know. All right, thank you very much for the break. And we will be getting underway with 357 and 365 Grove Street Site Plan Review. So if the applicant could just introduce themselves and update us on where the project is, and then we'll go from there.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Michael Modestino representing the applicant, Liberty Grove LLC. Mr. George Clements, the manager of the LLC, is seated behind me. I also have the experts that were engaged by my client. They're seated behind me. I have Sean Hardy and Chi Man. They're the civil engineers in the project. I think you've met them before. I have Garrett Tunison and he designed the landscaping plan. He's from Tunison Environmental Consultants LLC. Randy Hart from VHB did the traffic study. And Nick Veloso works for Stock Architects in Providence, Rhode Island. He's the architect for the project. I would say that we're at the point now where we've had three meetings and we've gone through multiple peer reviews and updated peer reviews. And I think at this point, we're at the point where I believe that the experts engaged by the planning department and the experts engaged by my client are pretty much in full agreement. There's some things here or there that they don't agree 100% on, but mostly we have an agreement. Also, I don't know if you recall, but at the last meeting, in the meeting before that, there was a neighbor by the name of Keith Rolini. He's here tonight. And he had legitimate concerns and objections about the project, about traffic, about screening, et cetera. My client has spent a lot of time talking to him and I believe that they've come to an agreement about how to proceed and how to protect his interests. He's concerned about more screening on the project at the site on Grove Street. My clients agreed to do that. He was interested in expanding a restriction that we, my client had agreed to on the left-hand turn on Grove Street, which is four to six every day, also seven to nine in the morning. But he suggested that it be expanded to four to seven. My client has agreed to that. Lastly, my client agreed to an order of condition to be put into the existing orders of condition that would require the tenant, CVS, or any subsequent tenant, to clean the property out, pick up all the debris once a day. And I know the neighbor was concerned about that. So with having said that, we have gone through the commentary of Ms. Santucci-Rozzi, the director. And we concur with practically everything that she has stated. We've gone through the orders of condition and we pretty much agree with the orders of condition. There's some minor differences, but nothing of any major nature. So at this point, I think Ms. Santucci-Rozzi would probably want to go through the report.
When you say order of conditions, are you referring to the draft conditions?
The draft conditions, yes.
All right. You do have an order of conditions issued by the Conservation Commission, that's correct?
We do, we do.
Did you have any, you didn't have any, that was the extent of your presentation?
For now, yes.
Okay, great, thank you.
I obviously would like the team to speak to any of the specific questions about the building, about the traffic, about the landscape design, et cetera.
Okay, great, thank you. Director Santucci-Rozzi, do you want to go over your staff report and discuss any draft conditions at this time?
Yes, I would, I would, Madam Chair, and thank you, Mr. Modestino. So I've been working very diligently with Mr. Clements and his team over the last week. The revised materials were submitted in accordance with the deadline. They were provided to our peer review consultants that are here with us this evening, Mr. Robert Micho from MDM Consultants and Deb Keller from Maryland Engineering. Mr. Micho is on traffic and Ms. Keller is on stormwater. So the materials were submitted, they were circulated to the peer review consultants. And there was some back and forth dialogue with Mr. Micho and Mr. Hart, who is George's traffic consultant. And I would say that those items are 95% addressed. There is one outstanding item that involves some striping and a little bit of realignment of the entry on Liberty Street. And then Ms. Keller also did her review and she issued some comments as well. Her comments involve a little more work on the civil side for Mr. Hardy and Mr. Man. And those revisions are something that will be addressed in the draft conditions. So if we turn to the report, I would like to, what I did this afternoon is a variety of different revised materials have been submitted to the board and they're in your packet this evening. And I've gone through my staff report and things were either noted as addressed, not addressed, or partially addressed. So if we start with comment A, and I've just done a checkbox on my report, comments one, two, and three have all been addressed to date. When we look at comment B, there was no new comments. Comment C was partially addressed. Mr. Clements has submitted a revised floor plan and as well as some revisions to the site plan. There are a few things that I just want to clarify with Mr. Clements on the loading and that's more so that we can just understand how the loading is going to take place for the condition. But that has been addressed. Item D in the topography section, there was a concern about some grading discrepancies in the drainage plan. Comment number one has been addressed. Comment number two, which was partially addressed in the, when the staff report was issued, that has been addressed now and is also addressed in a condition. Comments E and F primarily outline, excuse me, refer to Maryland Engineering's report dated May 3rd. And while those revisions haven't been incorporated into the subsurface design, Hardy Man has indicated for the record, and we have that this evening, that all of those items will be addressed to the satisfaction of the peer consultants. Item G, which is landscaping, item number one will be conditioned. We do have a photometrics plan. I've asked George... I've asked George to talk to the manufacturer and make a few tweaks. Um, I think everybody can kind of close their eyes and see them. CVS typically runs these band lights above the windows that get pretty bright, and we were looking at some of the candle foots, uh, and George, uh, George agrees those are going to be adjusted slightly, but we're at zero at the lot lines. Uh, we fade out, uh, very nicely on the lighting plan. Um, comment number three was a new comment, and, uh, first we had questioned, is there any fencing proposed, and Hardy Mann had indicated there wasn't. Um, the town actually owns the land behind this property, uh, and they have shown the fencing. One of them isn't in the correct location, that will be revised, um, but that will provide some protections, um, for the town and the land that we own. Um, the fence cannot go the full length, we don't want to have fences right in the middle of the wetland, so we're taking that from the property line on Liberty Street, interior to the 25, no disturb. We'll start on the other end at the daycare and come in to the 25, no disturb as well. So fencing off, uh, as much of that without having any impact to the wetland is the goal there. Um, comment H deals with the, uh, more landscaping, um, in the front, um, or, excuse me, uh, the side where they abut the daycare that Mr. Clements just constructed, that is in a residential zone, they need a ten-foot buffer there, they meet that. They also meet the ten-foot buffer, uh, butting the town-owned property, that's all been addressed. Um, the landscaping plan, uh, Garrett, um, Tunison did provide, uh, today, which is in your packet, uh, a 360 on the landscape plan, looks much, much better. And from the discussions I heard this evening from Mr. Modestino, they'll be further revising that in response to, uh, Mr. Rellini's concerns across the street. Um, there are two, uh, excuse me, there is two sections on the plan. We require that, uh, the parking cannot be closer than ten feet to the street. On the Grove Street side, they're at nine feet. Again, we were trying to push the building as much as we could towards Grove Street, uh, and away from the wetland area. Again, I had spoken to George, uh, some time ago, and indicated that wasn't going to be an issue. In addition to that nine feet, there's landscaping that's in the right-of-way, so that area will actually visually be much deeper than nine feet. And they've added some reserved parking close to the Liberty Street entrance, as shown on the current plan, and, uh, that's nine feet from the street, so that's a waiver, um, from the board, uh, from ten feet down to nine, uh, to nine feet. Uh, comment I is parking areas and facilities for internal vehicular and pedestrian access. Uh, snow storage, the site is fairly tight, there's limited areas with the resource areas. Um, the plans do show a few areas, and then there's a condition that they need to remove, uh, snow from the site, um, in the event of, of a large storm. Um, the parking spaces have been revised, uh, that comment has been addressed. Um, the rest of the comments here have been addressed. Um, Randy Hart, he's been with the, uh, with the, uh, and we've had some, 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 uh, and whatsoever with the parking or any of the circulation. Um, comment K was about utilities and whatnot, uh, excuse me, gas and electric. That's all been shown on the plans, is addressed. We've got comments today from Beld, they have no objections to what's being shown. Um, I deals with the lighting, excuse me, L deals with the lighting, again, that has already been addressed. Uh, the loading facilities, they have in fact shown the loading area consistently, consistently on all the plans. Um, and again, just, um, in discussions with George and hooking up with CVS, um, just making sure that we understand how the loading is going to happen so that we can properly condition that. Um, the dumpsters, so the dumpsters are in the back corner, um, sort of, I'd say, kind of near the drive-thru, um, and they have provided templates for fire engines, and, um, we just want to make sure that the, uh, trash truck can get in there, um, whether it's a rail loading or a front loading, uh, and making sure that we have that as well. Um, let me see here, um, the traffic study, I had noted, and Bob is here again this evening, I would say those are about ninety-five percent addressed, the five percent they've committed to addressing. Um, we've got all of the update on permits, uh, they're in discussions with Mast Dot, they haven't made a formal filing yet, and they received the order of conditions last week from the Conservation Commission. Uh, item Q deals with the architecturals, that has been addressed. Um, and then the additional items, all of those have been addressed. Um, and the item about the, um, sidewalk along the front, that is noted in the conditions. We have the sidewalk on Grove Street that's got various curb cuts. George is going to be closing those, relocating them. The sidewalk's not in the best shape, um, so we're looking for that to be reestablished, uh, once the project's completed. New comments, the stop sign coming out of the drive-thru has been added, um, and I have discussed with Mr. Modestino today, um, the mitigation package. Uh, what I did, really simple and straightforward, we have another CVS on the opposite side of town, almost the same exact building, and a very interestingly similar networks, similar network, uh, Washington Street and Church Street at an intersection. So we did about a hundred thousand dollars in mitigation for that project, um, and we'll be looking for the same for this project. Uh, the, the mitigation will consist of the signal timing, reestablishing between, um, George's property line and the sidewalk landscaping, as well as reestablishing the sidewalk, and then a cash contribution noted in condition sixty-three to help assist, um, with the, um, improvements that were funded by the Brigham Project. So trying to get some additional funds to aid, um, in getting that right-hand turn lane constructed. So we have, um, that was basically the staff report, like I said, spent some time today. Um, there were several things that were outstanding, but, um, in the last four days, we received quite a bit of information. Very happy with, uh, the revised materials that we received, um, thus far. And then getting into our conditions, again, I took the CVS decision that we had up at Capens, went in there and just started cleaning it up, adding the right street names in. Few of the conditions have been updated since we issued that permit. Our as-built condition, um, in particular, um, has been changed since then, and as you'll note in the conditions, you might see some things highlighted in yellow. Um, those are blanks that I need to fill in, primarily dates of things. Um, the first highlighted yellow, we see in condition thirty-three, and that's just making sure that as I number and clean this up, that we refer to the right condition for modifications. Uh, condition thirty-four is inserting a date on the final operations and maintenance plan. Um, condition forty-three, again, I drafted this over the weekend, um, they have sixty-seven parking spaces, um, and they've parked for the mezzanine, which is just for storage, and, um, they do have, I believe, who are, seven spaces in reserve. So that takes it down to sixty. In my discussions with Mr. Micho, and I think everybody can kind of understand this, there's a sweet spot for CVS, um, and it's about between forty-five and fifty spaces. So they'll have way in excess of, um, the actual peak demand, and it's interesting because I often talk about our ordinance being overparked, and we park retail at, uh, five per thousand, if it was parked at four per thousand, we would almost be right in line with, with, um, CVS demands. So I'm not concerned whatsoever, um, about the reserved spaces, and then we have the ones in the back, um, labeled, uh, for employees. Uh, forty-five, that's me just going back and verifying the section that I've denoted. Condition forty-seven, I'll, uh, include the, um, loading procedures for CVS. Um, condition fifty-five, um, just highlighting, there was, uh, an initial traffic report, and maybe, um, Mr. Hart might be able to answer this right now, um, where I believe they were using a forty-nine percent pass-by rate for CVS, um, in further discussions back and forth, um, with, uh, Mr. Hart and also our peer consultant, uh, in, in a follow-up from this last meeting. We talked about taking twenty-five percent, uh, pass-by is reasonable, um, but I don't believe the table, um, was updated in the, um, traffic memorandum. So we'll get that updated, and I'll clarify that with Randy and, and clean this up. Um, we got a revised sightline, um, exhibit, I just need to make sure I insert the right title and date. Condition sixty-three, uh, I talked about earlier, um, the mitigation, um, dollar amount, again, we, we're looking for a hundred thousand, so it would be fifty thousand cash, plus the other two improvements I described with the signal timing. And then, uh, condition sixty-four, I'm going to consult, uh, Randy Hart and also Bob Micho, uh, to just get the specific language, uh, for the timing, to make sure I don't mess that up. Um, and then, under the operational, um, condition sixty-seven is, um, the fence condition, I just need to look up the, uh, map number, and then, seventy referencing the stormwater and operations. Seventy-three, they're importing about fifteen hundred cubic yards of fill. Now that we have the final grading plans, I'll go in and clean up condition seventy-three, and that's about it. Um, the attachments, we do have, um, responses from both, uh, Hardy Mann Design Group on the staff report, and we have also responses from VHB to Bob Micho's, um, latest and greatest information on the traffic. So, um, these conditions, uh, in my opinion, are appropriate, encompassing, um, and the, what is going to take place, um, after this evening, uh, hopefully this project is voted favorably upon by the board. Um, Hardy Mann is going to sharpen their pencil, and Deb Keller is going to take, uh, another look at the drainage, and the expectation is, is that that final design satisfies all of her most recent comments. Um, that memo was dated, I believe, May 3rd. Yes?
Yep.
And, uh, like I said, uh, both of those consultants are here this evening, if the board would like to ask them any questions, or get any additional information from them, and I'm also available for any questions. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much. Alright, um, this is a continued public hearing, so if anybody from the public would like to come up and ask questions or comment as the board moves through their deliberations, please feel free. Um, are we, was the peer, were our two peer review consultants anticipating speaking tonight or updating us on their work?
Yes, yep.
Because I know we have them both here, so...
Yeah, that's what they're, that's what they're here for, yep.
Alright, so, um, if, if you wouldn't mind, peer reviewers, um, just to kind of come up, introduce yourself, and then just kind of give a brief overview of what has transpired since the last meeting.
Yes, thank you, uh, Chair, members of the board, uh, Robert Micho with MDM Transportation Consultants. Since our initial review, um, the applicant has provided responses, and we've also had the opportunity to have discussion directly with, uh, engineering and planning during that interim period, uh, to understand, um, the position that, that the, uh, departments, planning and engineering would take, um, on certain issues. By and large, uh, I think the comments that we did submit were addressed appropriately by VHB. There is going to be some continued coordination with Mast Dot on the specific treatment of improvements at the signal. That really is in the purview of Mast DOT, to ultimately determine or serve as the arbiter for exactly what happens there, at least in the interim period. Uh, as you know, the project itself is not a high-impact project from a traffic perspective. It's not a high generator necessarily, but there are appropriate things that can be done at the signal, and VHB has acknowledged that in their response. As we turn our attention to, uh, other aspects of, of the project, uh, transportation monitoring, for instance, we had suggested that that be a condition, and I think that's appropriately drafted, and Melissa, you can elaborate, elaborate on that. Um, we did suggest that, um, there be, uh, more than one observation in certain instances of how the driveways are actually functioning, uh, in particular, uh, illegal left turns under that restricted time period that was mentioned earlier, just to ensure that, uh, the sign restriction is in fact effective. And to the extent it's not, and it's creating a safety issue, that that be documented and discussed further with the town to determine remedial measures, if necessary. Um, as it relates to the site plan, the most significant comment we had really had to do with making sure that the Liberty, uh, driveway was designed in a way that facilitated the future widening of Liberty Street, right? That's, that plan, which is at, uh, a preliminary design stage, would have an exclusive right-turn lane being added to Liberty, which is going to vastly improve its efficiency, the signal. Uh, and that would place the sidewalk, the crossing of the driveway, and the stop bar, uh, further back into the site than what is, what was originally planned for in the, in the site plan submittal. So we had suggested certain improvements or modifications to the site plan, specific to that driveway, that would have, um, the aisle, if you will, the circulation aisle within the property, set back a bit further from Liberty Street to facilitate that future improvement. And what we've suggested is a one-way circulation pattern around the vicinity of that driveway to reduce the potential for vehicular conflict, because there's a lot happening there, right? There's not a lot of storage length, you've got parking very close to it, it's going to probably serve as the higher-volume driveway. Um, so those are all documented in here, and I think that, uh, the applicant, uh, is continuing to consider, uh, those specific, uh, modifications, which will not reduce the parking relative to what they're proposing and what they're required to provide, uh, but certainly represent what we think are substantial circulation enhancements that can be, uh, adopted to facilitate that improvement. Finally, on, um, swept path analysis, though the applicant hasn't specifically provided, um, analysis for the town's responding tower truck, the aerial vehicle, uh, we understand that there may be a condition drafted to ensure that the fire department be given another, uh, bite at the apple, so to speak, to ensure that they're comfortable with how their vehicles would need to access and circulate within the property, uh, making sure that the swept paths don't impact light poles, landscaping, or that the vehicles themselves are not impacted by the grading of the driveways. Uh, so, we're satisfied with, um, with VHB's responses. I think that, uh, many of the points that we've raised are, are addressed in some of the conditions that Melissa had mentioned, the most significant of which is the Liberty driveway modifications. And I'm glad to answer any questions.
Madam Chair, just quickly before, I, I have something on the, on the tip of my tongue in, in going through here. So, Mr. Micho had, had proposed them doing a week-long monitoring, um, and that's what I had included in the draft conditions, and I see the response, um, from VHB. We typically do two weekdays, I think they must have seen another decision that I wrote, but we typically do two weekdays, not a Monday or a Friday, because those, you know, we say Tuesday, Wednesday, or Thursday, those are typically your more average trip generators, and then a Saturday. So, would that be something that would provide enough data, Mr. Micho, or do you think we need to do the full week?
Right, and this is something that I discussed with Randy at VHB. Um, we're not looking for a capacity analysis for every day of the week, that's not the intention of the suggestion.
Okay.
Suggestion really relates to what's happening at Grove Street in particular, uh, and Liberty for that matter, right? So at Grove Street, there's a proposed restriction on left turns. My opinion is that, um, any left turns that would be attempted from there during peak hours, during certain hours of the, of the week, uh, and, and, uh, hours of the day, would create a potentially untenable safety issue, right? They, vehicles could essentially be trapped, if you will, on Grove Street while they're waiting for this gap to be created, uh, or it could create an onsite circulation issue. So, in the ordinary course, monitoring would include one or two days, typical days, you do a capacity analysis, you look at the queues, you're done. The intention of recommending a week-long is to specifically look at the left-turn activity from the driveway during the peak hours, particularly the hours that are being restricted. It, it would not, uh, in my opinion, provide sufficient information if you only looked at one day, and maybe you got lucky that day and people decided not to make left turns. I think, uh, a more extended observation of that specific aspect of the project would be appropriate, so that you could identify a trend. And to the extent that illegal left-turn movement occurred on a regular basis, not just one day, but on a regular basis through that period, that would be subject to further discussion with the to, town to determine whether or not other measures might be needed to restrict that from, from occurring. Uh, but I, I would welcome input from the applicant on that point as well. I think you asked them directly, Melissa.
I'd ask Mr. Hart to come up, if that's possible?
What's that?
Mr. Hart's going to speak to that.
Well, good evening, Randy Hart with VHB.
Randy Hart with VHB. Just in response to what was just said, I consulted with my client. We have no issue with doing seven days of counts to validate the turn restriction. We don't think it should be 24-hour counts, because the hours outside of the restriction really have no bearing on the left turn, but certainly doing seven days during the restricted timeframe would be fine.
So, let me just ask a question. Isn't it just a recorder, or is it somebody actually, I don't know?
We would do it with cameras.
Okay.
Essentially, yeah.
Okay, so what I will do is I will follow up with Mr. Micho and Mr. Hart to just fine-tune that, that condition, to make sure we get the full week, but it's only the, I mean, we only have numbers for the peak hours anyways. So, what we could possibly do is maybe a few days, 24 hours, just so we can get a daily number, because that's also something that we have in the ordinance and we like to track. And then, we can truncate the peak periods to less days.
Okay. I'm just going to stay on traffic and ask board members to comment specifically to this. I just had a follow-up question. You had noted that in your most recent peer report, that much of it had been addressed. And there is, in the staff recommendation, a recommendation that the applicant would satisfy all following, all written comments, and one of those is of the traffic peer report. And you had noted, I don't know how you stated it exactly, but potential modifications to the Liberty Street entrance. And I'm just wondering, are those going to be considered comments that they would have to address, or are those more of just like, we think this would be beneficial, but you don't have to?
My opinion is that the suggestions we have provided are absolutely feasible, while still allowing conformance with the zoning requirements and the dimensional requirements of the plan and the parking requirements. The intent of this, and this is not something that would ordinarily be provided in a peer review, is that I feel strongly that if the driveway remains in its designed form, that it will have consequences as it relates to the widening of Liberty Street, to the applicant. I think it's in the applicant's best interest to actually take another hard look at that to achieve two objectives. One is to facilitate the widening, and the second is to reduce the potential for conflict within that very shallow driveway. And that can be achieved by maintaining 24-foot aisles next to parking and conversion of a certain portion of the aisle to a one-way traffic flow pattern so that someone coming off of Liberty doesn't try to make a hard left, if you will, to get to the main parking field in direct conflict with a vehicle that might be waiting to leave the site.
Great, thank you. And then, oh, go ahead, Dr. Sanchez.
Madam Chair, just to point out, Mr. Micho and myself and John Thompson did have a call last week. Bob wanted to, and I also wanted to talk these things through with our town engineer, and he was in support of this as well.
In support of?
These changes that Mr. Micho just discussed.
So, the recommendations to adjust?
Yes.
The entrance from what is currently shown?
Yes. The curb cut stays in the same spot. It's just things that, kind of, on paper, pulled back a little bit.
As a follow-up, somewhat related question, and I think you might have noted it as one of your last comments in your peer report, you did touch on the 8% slope coming down on the driveway. And I would just like to ask either yourself or the applicant to confirm that that is appropriate for vehicles, and vehicles will not bottom out, and emergency vehicles will be able to adequately access that via those grades at those entrance drives.
Right. The 8% grade as a grade isn't necessarily the problem. It's the change in grade coming off of public way into the driveway. As far as I could tell from the grading plans, there's really no transition of the grade from the flat grade to 8%. It's a rather abrupt transition. And there's at least a possibility that a larger vehicle, a fire apparatus, for instance, that has a larger overhang and a rear bumper overhang as well, in trying to negotiate that sharp transition, may actually have difficulty doing that. My firm has actually conducted an identical exercise in another community in the Commonwealth at the request of the fire department for that very reason. Those are expensive pieces of equipment, and notwithstanding that the fire department would want to have a quick response, that could impede their quick response, and it could secondarily damage their vehicle. So, we had suggested that maybe they take a harder look at that to make sure that it's going to work.
And I think that may tie into the conversation about the widening at Liberty Street, because then you would be starting your grade up into the site that much closer, which would increase that slope.
That's correct.
So, potentially have maybe more of an impact. And then, on the Grove Street exit, either yourself or the applicant, as traffic engineer can answer this, but there is the wall, the retaining wall with some landscaping at that corner. Do you have any concerns for site distance visibility of vehicles exiting that onto the street?
Yeah, we had suggested, excuse me, in our commentary, that a note, specific note, be added to the site plan set that indicated not only the location of the sightline triangles, but that any appurtenance wall planting be maintained in such a manner as to not impede sightlines within that triangular area. And so, I know that VHB has produced an exhibit that includes that information, but it doesn't officially appear on the site plan set itself. That would address that exact issue. So, to the extent a wall elevation were within the sightline triangle on the plan, that would be in violation of that note, that requirement.
Member McCallum, do you have any comments for our traffic peer consultant or questions?
Thank you. Could you summarize for us who are not, you know, professional engineers, how much of a difference remains between some of your recommendations and what the applicant needs to do? Where are we? Are we, it seems that we're short. So, how short are we in terms of what you had to review?
Well, I think that any gap that exists between what needs to be done and what ultimately gets built is going to be memorialized within the context of the conditions, right? So, I think the applicant would be at some level of risk if there are, the wall example being one, if there is the inability to design and build a wall that is outside of the sightline triangles. That's something that would be a burden on the applicant and would be memorialized within the condition, right? So, that's one point. The other has to do with the design of the driveway. I think there is absolutely a viable solution to design and make those modifications. I don't see that as a major barrier. The grade and the grading, again, would be something that rests as a burden to the applicant to demonstrate to the satisfaction of the fire department ultimately that it will actually work for those vehicles. In another community where we had a similar issue, there was a condition written that allowed the fire department final say, if you will, on the driveway grades and actually testing the driveways prior to completion of construction. So, I think those types of remaining issues or gaps, if you will, could certainly be addressed through a condition process, and it would rest as a risk to the applicant, if you will, to make sure that they can achieve those through the condition.
Okay, so, some things left to be done.
Yes.
Not necessarily monumental, but they need to be done in order to have this be complete. So, I just asked the director, to what extent, from what Mr. Micho was just saying, are we, do we have them in the conditions? I mean, how long is this going to take? Are we covered?
Yes, Mr. McCallum. We are definitely covered. I would say we're over-covered. The assurances and the conditions are in favor of the town, and the expectation is very high. And Mr. Chi Man, who's here this evening from Hardy Man, has indicated they've seen all of the comments. And to Bob's point, some of them are already addressed in these things, and the additional ones, they feel very comfortable that they can address. If they can't, well, then you know where they'll be, right back here.
Got it, okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Member Crowe, do you have any comments or questions with relation to traffic?
Related to traffic, the Liberty Street widening, is that, I know there's been some corridor studies and different things. Is that a concrete plan? Is that still in discussions?
I can, that, Member Crowe, is, so when we, when we did the Brigham and Women Project up at Columbian, we had asked them to take a look at Liberty and Grove. It happened to be VHB, different consultants from Randy Hart. It was the applicant's traffic engineer. And they looked at it and did like, you know, there was option A, option B, and option C, like, you know, minimal, middle of the road, and then, you know, the Cadillac. And really trying to see, like, what does the middle of the road get us? What does the Cadillac get us? And did a very detailed analysis that just because you spend more money at the intersection, doesn't really mean it's going to work any better. So, what we had talked to Brigham about was option B, which option B is actually on page, I don't have page numbers on this, the third page of the staff report. So, I had cut and pasted that from a figure that we had from that permitting in here. So, it was, it was kind of, well, it was agreed to that that was the most effective option, giving the cost. And we had asked Brigham to provide financial contribution to help with this, and that's what we're asking George for as well. Yes, we want it done. We don't have enough money, but now that we have some money, we might be able to go for some additional grants. We do have other folks in the room this evening that are going to be producing traffic as well in the corridor, so we could have some potential movement on this sooner rather than later. But the goal is to have that constructed.
Okay.
When? I can't really answer that.
Right. Okay, okay, thank you. That's all I had.
Member Grove, do you have any comments for the traffic? Member Ken, do you have any comments?
No.
Questions?
Sorry. All right, I think that is very helpful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Could I just point out one thing?
Oh, yeah, you may.
We did receive a letter today from the fire department.
Yeah, I was, yeah, I'm sorry, jumping in there.
And they had inspected the plans, and they felt that there was no issue even with their tower truck of the fire department that would be going in there. I wanted to let you know about that.
Sure. And I, I think sometimes the grading, especially the grading when you look at it from, like, the transitional area, is hard to maybe visualize when you're looking at your department trucks. Like, they may be looking at it two-dimensionally and not thinking about it three-dimensionally. And I'm not saying that they aren't talking about it three-dimensionally, but I do think, just given the unique nature of the grade change in those driveways, that it may be beneficial to specifically ask the fire department to comment on the three-dimensional aspect of that, or to provide some sort of condition that would allow them the ability to have kind of a final review on both the two-dimensional and three-dimensional access.
Yep, that's addressed in the conditions. I believe it includes everything down to, you know, hydrants.
I saw the, the Condition 35. I don't know if there's another one. It says the applicant shall comply with the fire department's requirements in regards to access aisles, fire lanes, sprinklers, and additional hydrant locations.
Yes.
Is that it?
Yep.
Is that, does it go without saying that the fire department will again review the drawings after all of the comments are addressed?
So, what typically happens is we have the site plan, and then, when they go to pull the building permit, Ross Forsberg, the inspector of buildings, and the fire department sit down with the applicant, and they go through all of the various code requirements and things. But if the board would like, I can ask them to weigh in again when we get the final set of plans.
Yeah, I am very concerned with that aspect of the driveways.
Understood, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Was there anything else you wanted to?
No, the applicant would have no issue with that.
Okay, great. Ms. Keller, do you want to come up and review the stormwater peer review work that you've done?
So, good evening, everyone. Deb Keller with Merrill Engineers and Land Surveyors. So, as stated, we did issue an initial review letter, which we did receive a response and revised plans, which we then reviewed again, issued as stated a May 3 review letter. I did see the latest set of plans. I would note that some of my comments were addressed. I haven't received, and I think it's noted that they will provide a response, noting that they will respond to the remaining comments that I have. I think the biggest one from a stormwater perspective is one of the infiltration systems is along the, I'm going to call it the drive-through lane. And I was looking for some more information to support the groundwater elevation utilized in the design, and a comment that was discussed with the engineering department was flipping the sewer main location and the system, which benefits both utilities. I think, I think I did read, note that Hardy and Man noted that that was a good suggestion, so I'm hoping to see that on the final plans. I think that really is the major component with regard to stormwater. They did address adjustments in the systems. They meet the peak rate volumes watershed adjustments. I think there might be a few minor tweaks for grading, but again, just it's more planned cleanup than anything.
So, do you anticipate, again, just kind of along the similar lines, we do have in the staff report, oops, where did it go? We just have a note that the applicant would need to satisfy all your peer review comments. And you do feel, or the applicant has stated that they will do that, and you feel that that is most likely achievable. And I assume those comments will be all addressed, like, those are required comments to address, not any sort of suggested comments?
No, I don't have any suggested comments.
They're all required comments, okay.
They should all be required. And as I stated, I did review the current plan set that was submitted, and it did look like a majority of the comments had been addressed. I just didn't have a review letter kind of identifying them all, and I could go and kind of check them all off.
Okay. Member McCallum, do you have any comments or questions for our stormwater peer reviewer? Ms. Keller?
The chair basically asked my question, which I was going to ask you again. So, there's some deficiencies. You haven't seen the final stuff. I'm going to ask, I heard what you said, I'll ask the director. Again, do we feel like we're covered? And is, are these shortfalls going to be resolved in an orderly and timely fashion?
Same sort of responses previously, Member McCallum. The expectation, you know, the sooner the better that we get the plan, because the sooner we get it, the sooner Deb gets it and gives it her blessing, and then we can file the decision.
Okay. And Mrs. Modestino, just to be clear, you know, we, in my opinion, I think, you know, we try to approve projects which are complete. And, you know, like I said, there's, seems like there's some loose ends, so if we're going to move forward in this, I think we have to have confidence that it's going to get done on time and these issues from all the peer consultants get addressed. So, that's why I'm asking these questions. Because, you know, again, we like to see it all packaged, done 100%. It's all packaged.
I understand. I can only say that the team worked very, very hard to respond to the peer review reports in a timely manner. We had meetings about it, we had telephone conferences on a day-to-day basis, and I think they will respond, and they have in the past to try to get to the point where we're at now. And I think we just have some loose ends to tie up, but I think the conditions would protect the the town.
Okay, thank you, thank, thank you, Madam Chair.
Great, thank you. Member Crowa, do you have any comments or questions for the stormwater review?
No, I do not, thank you.
Member Grove, do you have any comments? Member Kent, do you have any comments or questions?
No.
All right. With regards to the Braintree DPW comments, which are outlined in the staff report, those have been received, have those been received, and those are addressable?
Yes, we got those, I believe, yesterday, and she sent us an email saying, we've got those, and we're going to address those too, so, I mean, Mike, Mr. Modestino is here this evening giving verbal commitments, but we have these commitments in writing in the record as well. That was dated May ninth, correspondence number twenty-nine. A lot of stuff came in, I'll double check.
What number was that, twenty-nine?
Yes.
Okay. I guess any, thank you very much, Ms. Keller. Is there anybody from the public who wishes to provide any comment or ask any questions at this time? Member McCallum, do you have any other comments, questions, anything that we have not discussed yet that you'd like to bring up?
No, I'll just reiterate, so if the director feels that we are protected by the conditions, and then, then the burden is on the applicant to get it done in a timely and high-quality fashion, so, no, I mean, again, if the director is confident, then that's.
Yes, I'm, I'm, I'm very confident, I'm very, I'm very confident in that, Member McCallum, and we have, again, Deb and Mr. Michio here, who have been great, I've been consulting with them along the way, you know, real, you know, trying to, like, you know, fully understand all these comments, and knowing that they're comfortable and are confident that the items can be addressed is just another level of assurance, they're working for you.
Right.
Essentially, on the applicant's, on the applicant's dime, so they've been a huge help in this process, and to Mr. Modestino's point, sort of the, the back and forth that's happened over the last four days, it was a lot, but it provided a lot of more information, and, you know, my position, even from last week to today, has changed quite a bit in regards to the materials that we received over the weekend, so the safeguards are for the town, the responsibility is on the applicant, if they can't perform, they will have to come back to this board.
Okay, thank you very much.
I just have a comment on the title of sheets provided, do we have a record existing conditions plan as part of this drawing set that we would be approving?
Um, we don't have the, oh, wait, hold on.
Does the applicant know that answer?
I don't.
They do, Madam Chair, it's underneath, if we want to have a separate sheet, you can see it kind of faint, I know Peter Hoyt did the survey work, would you like that on a separate sheet, Madam Chair?
That was an Impala Valley survey, so.
Oh, I'm sorry.
When they had done it, we, they had, like, three different existing conditions, we've reached out to them, they're bringing it together, they will formalize one.
Okay, so we'll add that to the plan set.
So would that be, would that be reflected as, that they would provide that, would that be a condition, or would that just be something that?
Oh, I'm writing it down right now, they're providing it.
Okay.
Yep.
And then we are going to be noting that the fire department will be reviewing the access aisle grades.
Yep, yep, I have that in my notes as well.
So if the board makes, if the board makes a motion on this application tonight, they would be looking at these draft conditions subject to meeting all the requirements of the peer review, that's correct?
The peer review, the staff report, and the engineering comments as well, there's four things referenced.
Okay.
Yep.
And does the project need, so the project needs a majority support on the approval of the draft conditions in this method of approval, correct?
It's a site plan review ordinance for some terrible reason requires a supermajority, so it would be four votes.
Okay.
Of the board this evening.
Okay. I don't have any further comments, is there anybody on the board who has any comments they'd like to add?
Yeah, I just have one question, I don't feel strongly about it, I'm just curious, the fence recommendation, I didn't know, I know the order of conditions was already received from Conservation, does that require going back to Conservation Commission, or is that, is that part of, it looked like the fence was new to the plan today or yesterday, but I'm not a hundred percent sure.
Oh, the, the fence that I've.
Right.
Um, I can talk to Kelly about it, that's why I said, don't go to the, they're kind of already working in some of those areas, that's why I called it off at the twenty-five, if that's something that she thinks needs some additional approval or something, we can work with the, with the Conservation Commission on that.
Okay.
Yep.
Yeah, I just say, I, from my perspective, I didn't, I haven't thought about it enough to see what the benefit of it was being close to the wetlands, so whether or not, if that was going to create a, a new component of approval, whether or not that was something.
I'll double check with her, of course, great suggestion.
And otherwise, I don't have anything else, I did note it as a site plan review, so it's a little bit not as broad as some of the special plants, special permit reviews that we have.
All right, is there anybody from the public who wishes to speak before we close the public hearing? All right, so we need to, and I think it seems clear that the applicant has reviewed the draft conditions, and would be in favor of the discussion we've been having around the draft conditions this evening?
That is correct, I, I would just add that, and I know I've spoken to Ms. Santucci-Rozzi about it, about adding the conditions that the neighbor had requested about the screening and.
Yes, so Mr. Rialini is, is here this evening, the board's packet included an email that he had sent to the board, and I know Mr. Clements and him are in discussions, I, my opinion is whatever they agree to, if they want to draft that up in writing, and I can include it in the draft conditions, I think there's some additional screening that is going to take place for him, and also, he was concerned about the litter, and I thought I had in here, I don't see it unless I included it in one of the other conditions, but I'm going to make a note here for litter patrol, and if it's not already buried in one of these conditions, it will be added.
Was there anything else?
Well, just the expanded hours of the left-hand turn prohibition.
Yep, I made a note on that, that was going to be changed, it's funny, I had four to seven at first, and then everybody was, was fine with four to six, so that was in condition fifty-four?
Yes.
So we talked about the restriction, seven AM to nine AM, now it says four to six, I'll just change the six to seven.
Thank you.
All right. All right, so we need a motion to close the public hearing, we also need a motion to accept correspondence into the record, if anybody would like to make a motion.
Motion to accept.
Excuse me.
I'm just making a thought here, a motion to bring correspondence into the record.
We have a motion by Member Crowa, do we have a second? We have a second by Member Kent, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all those against? Motion to.
Close the public hearing.
We have a motion to close the public hearing, do we have a second? Second by Member Kent, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all those against? All right. Chair, entertain a motion on the application.
I'll make a motion to grant site plan review with the conditions drafted by staff as modified on the record at the hearing tonight.
We have a motion to approve with conditions noted in this evening's meeting by Member Crowa, do we have a second? We have a second by Member Kent, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those against? That is four to one in favor of the application with conditions noted in this evening's meeting, thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board.
Colombian Street, Plan one-one-one-two, Plot twenty-two E and twenty-two F, special permit and site plan review, File twenty-two dash zero-three, Banner Park Campus LLC is the applicant, this is a continued public hearing, I think the applicant is going to update us on some work and information that they've done since our last meeting, and then we will take public comment and comments from the board, so.
Good evening, Madam Chairwoman, members of the board, attorney Brian Palmucci, on behalf of the Banner Park Project, we are here just as a refresher, we're here seeking a special permit and site plan review for the development of two buildings on the site at sixty Colombian Street, it's a warehouse and a life science building, one hundred and twenty thousand square feet and one hundred and fifty thousand square feet respectively. We are going to present this evening a slightly modified plan, which Carlos is going to go over in more detail if he can plug it in, Andrew is also here tonight if any traffic questions come up, but I, we, we have nothing specific to present related to traffic this evening. The changes that we're going to show you tonight are the result of our work with the Conservation Commission to address some of the environmental concerns that they raised about our plans as we've appeared before them, and changes were also made in response to the comments and input from the Waymouth residents that we heard at the, at the last hearing. We've offered to have a community meeting with, with Waymouth residents, and we hope that they'll be directly involved in the project moving forward, we. Very briefly, as I said, Carlos will go over the more detail, but some of the changes that we made were taking less of the trees off the site than we had originally planned, less impervious area, we, we included or added sight and sound barrier between the closest neighbors in, in Waymouth, and we moved the mechanicals from, this could not be more distracting, no, it's okay, that's okay, yeah, whatever, we moved the mechanicals from the, from an area of the building close to where the neighbors would be to the, to the furthest away, and then lastly, we took the trailer, the tractor trailer, we took the tractor trailer area that was closest to the Waymouth residence, and we eliminated it almost in its entirety. Since the last hearing, we had a productive meeting with town of Waymouth officials, including their planning director, we discussed this proposal specifically, potential future uses of the site that they had questions about, and the previously permitted Mass General Brigham Building. We're currently working with the New England Wildlife Center on the details of the future use of a large portion of the property for conservation and recreation trails, you can see that, I guess, on the left side of the screen, that's the area that we would be seeking, what is that, forty, almost forty-eight acres to put into conservation, and working with New England Wildlife Centers to create a trail system in that area. We'll continue, our, our goal here and our, our plan is to continue to listen to the residents, as well as town officials from both Waymouth and Braintree, to try and make this project as best a fit as we can, and mitigate any negative issues that arise. We, we don't expect that the board would be voting on this tonight, as there's certainly more work to do, including getting reports back from the peer review for traffic, at the very least, and, and getting our responses, so I know it's very late, I'll turn it over to Carlos, who will go through some of these changes in more detail, and then happy to answer any questions or take any comments from members in the public.
Hopefully this doesn't mess it up, thank you, Brian, members of the, the board, Carlos Sculte was civil and environmental consultant, we're the civil engineers for the project, as previously noted, we did have our opening hearing with the Conservation Commission, and we also reviewed the design, working with the, the various parties, and we have some visions that we just want to share with the public here at this hearing, acknowledging that we did just receive the peer review comments late this afternoon, so we look forward to working with the, the stormwater engineer as well as the traffic engineer review, which is forthcoming as well, so, again, this is just a presentation of updates today, we anticipate we'll be in front of the board again. So a lot of the changes that we looked at as part of the modifications to the project were focused along the Waymouth Town Line and the residential properties there behind Building B, so some of those changes included, as previously mentioned, eliminating some loading spaces, relocating some of the utility pads that were in that area, adding a privacy and screening fence, as well as reducing the limited disturbance. So what we have here in the red, those areas depict where there formerly used to be pavement and, and infrastructure, which shows a reduction in those areas, so what you could see in the right-hand side of the page there, which is the southerly end of Building B, we eliminated exterior storage of some of the tractor-trailer vehicles there, by doing so, we eliminated those eight spaces, which was roughly eighty-four hundred square feet of pavement, which was just removed from the project, associated with that removal, we were able to pull in the edge of the landscaping and the, and the tree buffer by about ninety feet, that also allowed us to be able to maintain roughly fifty to fifty-five additional trees that were previously identified as being removed as part of the project, so pretty significant reduction in, in the overall impacts at that end of the building. Accordingly, there also, previously were depicted some electric transformers and generators along the edge there with the residential properties, those were moved to the northerly end of Building B, which you could see there with the notation, by doing so, the grading also worked out better there with the relocation of those, it, it had a minor modification in the grading at the north end. It had a minor modification in the grading at the north end, and a fairly significant reduction in the amount of trees that needed to be impacted as part of the project at the southerly end of the building. And then also, in response to some of the comments that were noted about the concerns about potential noise, as well as light trespass into the property through either vehicles or through some of the overhead lighting, we included a screening fence along the edge of the property at the southerly end of the building. So, that would be a six-foot-tall privacy fence, which would be essentially a solid wall, or a fence, rather, that would prevent any sort of lights from shining through the adjacent properties. In addition to that, we're in the process of just performing a quick study on the noise, just to understand the impacts and confirm that the backup noises or any sort of incidental noise that might be associated with the building would be anticipated to comply with the noise ordinance. We've done similar studies on similar-type projects. We feel confident that it will be able to comply, and we'll provide the additional documentation And this shows the grading revisions. Again, the pink area at the southerly end of the building, by eliminating paving there, it was a fair amount of grading that we were able to eliminate at that end of the site, and relocating the utility infrastructure to the north end of the building as well. And then with the utilities as well, one of the good byproducts of shifting all the exterior utilities that we had to the northerly end of the building, we were able to reduce the amount of infrastructure that was required to wrap around the backside of the building, although we are still continuing to loop the proposed water line around the building for fire protection services, the electric, the natural gas, the telecommunications services. We were able to consolidate more to the northerly end of the building. One of the other elements, we worked with HAWK Design and Landscape Architects on the project as well to provide additional landscape screening on the residential side of the screening wall, in order to further buffer that edge and provide some living vegetation on the residential properties of the wall, to further enhance the landscaping that we have there, where we would be doing some minor grading, just to replant that so it's more robust in the proposed condition, in addition to the extensive existing landscaping, the mature trees that would be maintained as part of the project. We also reviewed in a little more detail the photometrics plan, just further reviewing that the overhead lighting that would be providing, the safety lighting for the operations of the facility, would in fact not trespass into the residential properties. And again, it's a conservative analysis that was done on the lighting analysis, in that it doesn't take into account any of the vegetation or the trees. It's basically just a net analysis, as if it were all open. So, this is conservatively showing that if it were open, it would be down to essentially zero-foot candles, which is dark at the property lines. In reality, it would be much less than that, because the trees would be blocking a fair amount of the light prior to being able to encroach further to the east. And then as part of the Conservation Commission filing, Garrett Tunsen with Tunsen Environmental helped identify elements that would be incorporated into the project design that would provide additional wetland enhancements, where there was encroachments within the buffer zones. Again, we're not encroaching on the wetlands themselves, just performing work within the buffer zones outside of the 25-foot no distur zone. And as part of that work, there was a significant number of wetland enhancement plans and enhancement areas that were identified on the project. One of those was in the southeast corner of the site, close to the residential properties along Tommy Marks Way, where there was a number of shrubs and trees and vegetation to be planted within the existing buffer zone. There's a second area located behind Building A with a similar enhancement area that's to be planted in between the proposed disturbance and the existing buffer zones of the wetlands. And then there's a third area that's located along the westerly side of Building A that's more of an enhancement area that provides additional supplemental plantings as well. So, all that's part of the Conservation Commission filing. We just wanted to highlight some of those elements that are included as part of this plan. And then we also understand part of the peer review consultant scope will be reviewing not only the stormwater analysis, which we just received today, but also taking a look at the notice of intent filing that was in front of the Conservation Commission. So, they'll be taking a look at some of these elements as well. So, that's a very brief overview, understanding it's late tonight, so we look forward to hearing from the town and answering any questions that anybody may have. So, with that, thank you.
If I may, Madam Chair, Deb Keller is here, as we know, and she did provide a letter this evening. I think it might be helpful to just have her kind of touch on that very quickly, for the benefit of the Board, as Carlos starts to revise materials and plans and whatnot. We can get an idea of what that's going to entail.
That'd be great.
Good evening again. Deb Keller with Merrill Engineers. Apologize for the lateness of the letter. I know not very many people got to read it, but I'll be brief. I did review the stormwater design, including whether or not low-impact mitigation or any kind of infrastructure was thought of in the design itself, as well as the hydrologic and hydraulic criteria standards, the DEP stormwater standards as well. Looking at the watershed plans, meaning the delineation of which subcatchments of waters drain in what directions. There are three design points defined, defined as A, B, and C, for each wetland flow is being directed towards. So, reviewed both the existing conditions, as well as the proposed conditions. There's some minor comments to look at, just tweaking some of those watershed areas with respect to topography on the site. Let's see. So, we also went through and looked at... There was one section that we had with regard to sensitive areas. This was discussed also at the Conservation Commission meeting. I did confirm that the site is located in outstanding resource water with respect to Whitman's Pond in Weymouth. It's a public water supply. Though reviewing the stormwater design, it does already address the additional requirements that are needed for an outstanding resource water, which would include looking at a higher water quality treatment, which is the one-inch rule, as well as in the treatment train, the flow paths for the stormwater, having it have a higher treatment prior to any infiltration components, which on this site, they... All except for one of their stormwater systems is an infiltration or has an infiltration component in it. So, making sure that those treatment trains are set up correctly is important. So, and I think noted in previous discussions for the site, there are some infiltration systems that don't have soil testing, and the applicant, I believe, applicant's engineer has indicated that additional soil testing will happen on the site to confirm those, the stormwater analysis proposed. I did have a couple of notes on the operation and maintenance plan to add with respect some of the discussion that we had, I believe, at the last hearing with... And I might be mixing this up with conservation. Talking about this as a lepal, which is a land use with a higher potential pollutant load, it's been indicated in the documents that there's a chance there'll be over 1,000 vehicles per trip, which would be identified as a lepal. Again, the stormwater design includes the additional design requirements to meet that criteria. Again, it's the one-inch water quality requirement, as well as the 44 TSS removal rate prior to any infiltration component. So, the two major things that we like to look for when we have those conditions. The one thing that I did note would be to add to the long-term pollution prevention plan, a spill containment management plan, so that there's some documentation for the site when it's developed, that if there is a spill, that they have the materials there and a plan in place to take care of that spill, to not allow it to get into any of their systems, or worst-case scenario, into the surrounding wetlands. Did confer, obviously, this is a larger site. It will require a stormwater pollution prevention plan, documentation to be prepared. Their EPA has come out with a new construction permit, so it has to be done on their 2022 permit application. I did ask the question in regards to if there would be a construction phasing or any intention on how the site, being a large site, would be phased from a construction standpoint. And I think most of the other questions that I had were just clarifications on the plan, a little bit of cleanup with regards to what's shown in the drainage model and what's represented on the plan.
Great, thank you. I think we, as a Board, really appreciate...
Yeah, sorry.
This is a lot of information, and I know this type of review you did very... You expedited it for us, so I'm very appreciative of that and your comments, and I know that we'll work through this with the applicant and continue to work with you. So, thank you very much.
Yep. You're welcome.
Madam Chair, not to put Mr. Micho on the spot, but he is here too, and he had indicated he would not have his report ready for this evening. He was helping us heavily on the previous project. But just to get a timeframe, so I can kind of build my world around everyone else's world, and kind of gearing up sort of for the next meeting, you think maybe two weeks?
So, it's officially on the record, two weeks. I'll start tonight. Thank you.
Okay, awesome.
And I know we have... I feel, I think we may have some... I don't know if anybody in the audience is still a continued public hearing, and seeing some of the revisions made this evening. We took a lot of commentary at our last meeting, but a lot of you have sat here through our entire meeting this evening. So, if you do want to come up, ask questions on any of the revisions presented, or provide any commentary, I would just ask that you try not to repeat information. If you want to come up and say you're in agreement with the person before you, or what someone else said, that would be helpful. So, thank you. Please feel free to come up if you have any comments. And again, just state your name and address for the record, for our records.
Hi, my name is Karen Warwick. I'm a resident of Weymouth. I was raised there, lived my whole life there.
Just your address, ma'am, for the record, please.
22 Dana Road, Weymouth proper. I was raised there, lived my whole life there, raised my kids there, and now my daughter, son-in-law, and grandson live in Weymouth. I've looked at the plans that Banner Park had submitted previously. They have scaled them down somewhat. However, I still feel that this project is not sufficient to be so close to residential neighbors. There are a lot of industrial parks around that are a lot larger. I know there are people in Birch Street and Braintree concerned, Tommy Marks Way. But the general town of Weymouth uses, utilizes Grove Street and Commercial Street to a very large volume, morning, noon, night, back and forth to the tea in Braintree and the commuter rails, and just getting to and from local retailers. So, I believe, and if I'm not mistaken, one of the buildings is slated to be utilized by Mass Brigham as a medical center. That may not be part of Banner Park's establishment, but it's in the same location. And that particular building, if it is approved and included...
It's already approved, ma'am.
All right. It's included.
It was approved a few years ago.
And 90,000 square feet would be about the size of that location. And there is another medical center that's in the South Shore that's in an industrial park. It's not near any residential's. But that's only 84,000 square feet, and they service eight to 1,000 patients a day. So, my assumption would be that this medical center, along with the tenant of the larger building, would have a great increase in impact on the traffic and the safety in that neighborhood. I do have a lot of concern about the residential area, the schools, the parks, and the construction and the pollution of noise and air that it can cause, not just the construction, but what is being built there. I see all these pictures and these diagrams of 100,000-square-foot building that they want to use as a warehouse or a laboratory. That was referenced in the CEC's initial memorandum, that they were talking about biotechnology and laboratories. So, I have a few questions, not for the Board directly, but for the people that are representing the Banner LLC, just to consider. You don't have to answer these, obviously, but I want you to think about them, because I would like to know, where do you live? Do you live in a community like Braintree, or Weymouth? Do you have concerns about the health and the wellness of your neighborhood and your community? Do you have children or grandchildren that you would subject to construction and possible air and noise and brown pollution? Because we don't know who this tenant is. Everyone says, "The tenant, the tenant." Is the tenant a laboratory? Is the tenant a pharmaceutical company? Does the tenant have toxic or hazardous materials coming and going out of that park through our residential streets in Weymouth? Until you know who the tenant is, you can't answer a lot of these questions. So, my response to you is that if you had children and grandchildren walking to the bus stops, or walking past those roadways that go into the existing TriQuan Park, would that concern you? It concerns me. I know Braintree and Weymouth residents would not approve of unsafe conditions and heavy traffic volumes, in addition to what is already there. A commuting time for someone that lives, like, in the neighborhood in Weymouth to go to the Braintree Tea to get the red line or whatever, is generally, like, without heavy traffic, 15, 20 minutes. With all the extra traffic and trucks and people coming into that complex, you can at least double, if not triple, that time. And what about the kids going to school? The school buses? They're coming to pick up the children, and if it's congested and there's traffic coming in and out of that location, it's going to add to the school day as well. And I understand this is going to be a seven-to-eight-year construction project. That's a long time for the people in both towns to deal with not just the construction and the traffic, but the noise and the pollution. So, I just want to know from this company, how do you turn around and build two buildings to accommodate a tenant that you can't tell us who it is, and what kind of manufacturing they'll be doing? What kind of transporting are they doing? Are there exhaust fans? Are there chemicals being delivered? Are the chemicals being transported? I don't get the answers, and I don't know how this Board, and I'm not saying you will, I don't know how this Board can consider granting permits to a development firm that can't tell you who's going to be sitting in that 100,000-square-foot building, or the 150,000-square-foot building. What are the materials coming and out? Will they be in trucks? Will they be held in tanks at the site? Thousands of people's lives in this town and in your neighboring town of Weymouth are going to be permanently changed from this particular project. I don't agree with it, not just because I'm from Weymouth, because I think it's harmful to a residential community, especially the people that are closest to the location. Overall, both towns are affected by high traffic and unsafe conditions for our children, and I don't believe that this company has provided adequate details or information to the general public about the tenant and its intentions and what's going to transpire. So, I would like the people from Banner to truthfully respond to, would you put it in your backyard? Would you let your kids walk down... Would you let your kids walk down the street, going by all this heavy traffic and tractor-trailers to go to school? Do you want to go out in your backyard on weeknight in the summer, and hear tractor-trailer trucks, hear exhaust fans, hear manufacturing, and the humming of electrical? Think about it, because I'm from Waymouth, I've lived in Waymouth my whole life, and as far as I'm concerned, I'm a taxpayer, and I'm a resident, I don't want this in my backyard. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Again, I know I mentioned this at the end of the last meeting, and if you weren't present, just if you could refrain from clapping, I think it's very disruptive for the meeting and our board member, and kind of is very distracting. Personally, it's hard for me to concentrate, and I want to make sure that I hear the concerns and be able to keep them in my mind as we move forward with this project, so.
Thank you.
If you could please just introduce yourself and state your address for the record.
Yes, good evening, my name is Louis Rizzo, I live at 537 Pleasant Street in South Waymouth. I also work for State Senator Patrick O'Connor. The reason I mention that isn't because of that fact, other than his concerns for the people that live on Tommy Marks Way, as well as his concerns of the impact on the New England Wildlife Center. I'll keep my comments brief, and if I'm repetitive, I apologize. So, the property on Tommy Marks, Tommy Marks was my grandfather, that property was in my family for over seventy years. My parents sold it in the nineteen eighties, they had ten acres of property there. Six of them were sold to the developer, because that was the only buildable property out of the ten acres. The other four acres were wetland and not considered buildable. My dad tried to donate it to the town of Waymouth, but they didn't want to take it because they wanted the tax revenue. But Robert Cullenain, the developer of Tricon Park, was interested in that property because it abutted his property. So, he bought that property, which is the property that abuts where Banner Park wants to build. So, that, again, was all wetland, and as a kid growing up there, we used to, we used to explore and do all the things that kids do in the woods. That area is loaded with vernal ponds, we used to go hunting for yellow-spotted turtles, they are on the endangered species list. There are plant life up there that's on the endangered species list, lady slippers, I don't know if you've ever heard of them, or ever seen one, but when you walk through those woods, we used to see them all over the place. So again, I just wanted to keep my comments brief. I know that the area itself, I know that it's, I read in the article in the newspaper that it's going to be a good boon to the town of Braintree, which I totally understand the tax revenue and everything else, but the inconvenience to the sixteen families that live on Tommy Marks Way, you know, and I know that you guys are doing all you can to minimize the effect, but let's face it, the, at night, noise travels, the sound of, you know, different machinery and whatnot, if you were to go up there right now, to that, where they want to build that, you would be deafened by the sound of the spring peepers, okay? And I, those are the sounds I remember as a kid, the sounds of nature, and what the, you know, what the New England Wildlife Center is trying to do there. The Curtis family, which owned the Curtis Farms supermarket back in the day, which then became Curtis Liquors, we all know where that is, the Curtis family donated that property to the New England Wildlife Center to preserve it, and to maintain it as wildlife. So, again, I just would like to present that information, I know a lot of it's repetitive, but anyway, thank you for hearing what I have to say.
Thank you very much.
My name is Jeremiah Murphy, I live at seventy-seven Tommy Marks Way. I am the closest abutter to the Banner Park project. Last meeting, myself, several neighbors, many residents of Braintree and Waymouth expressed concerns of air, noise pollution, conservation, inadequate buffer zone, lighting, traffic, and many other things. We were all here when Alan McDonald and his team were advised by the planning board to reach out to members of the community, including the residents of Tommy Marks Way. Mr. McDonald has not followed up on that suggestion, Banner Park LLC has not reached out. At the Braintree Conservation Meeting on May fifth, Alan McDonald claimed he spoke with our district councillor. Councillor Gary McDougal is here tonight, and he could tell you otherwise. As concerned abutters, we are now looking to the planning board for answers. Are you actually going to issue the special permit? If so, what kind of stipulations are you willing to put on it? Are you going to ask them to scale back to lessen impacts on traffic? Conservation, quality of life, and real estate values for the abutters? Will you put regulations on the hours of operation? Will you have them put up a sound barrier? Will there be restrictions on lighting? Will you have them put in writing a conservancy for the remaining land, which states that they will not further develop? These are the questions myself and my neighbors are now asking you, the planning board. And as far as the modifications go that I'm seeing tonight, what I'm seeing is an increased buffer zone for the wetlands, this might be appealing to conservation, but I don't see an increased buffer zone for the abutters. Just a fence, that's supposed to stop light and sound, possibly, I don't know, but I'm sorry, it's not enough. I also had, I have a video regarding traffic, I don't know if it's possible to show it here? I have it on my phone, I have it on a flash drive. Is that possible?
Is that possible?
Do you have a computer, sir?
I don't have a computer.
I'm not offering up mine. Do you want to, can you send me that file?
I can.
Digitally?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Or if you want to, is there anything else on that USB?
Ah, yes, there is, I have some other stuff regarding work, I'll email it to you.
Why don't you send it over to me?
Sure.
You have contacted me previously, and we'll get it out to the board members, and I can throw it on a USB and put it in the file.
Sure, yeah, just so everybody that's here tonight knows, it was Monday, May second, I was on my way to work, it was about seven fifteen, and traffic was backed up all the way down Colombian Street from Curtis Liquors, it was tough to get off of Forest Street to begin with, out of Tommy Marks Way, backed up all the way down Colombian Street, all the way down Grove Street, all the way to the intersection at Liberty Street. When I turned right at Crossroads Cafe, onto West Street, the traffic was backed up halfway down West Street, all the way to Waterford Drive, which is about the halfway point. So, obviously, a project of this magnitude and increased traffic trips into the campus and the trucks is only going to increase that, so, thank you for your time.
Thank you. And while I can't assure you what the final product before us will look like, or what our conditions will state, several of the items you raised are what we hope to condition and make sure does protect the abutters and the neighborhoods. We are undergoing a peer review on the traffic, so there will be commentary and discussion around, around that, and, you know, I hope we will be able to, you know, have these discussions and have a project that, you know, people will be happy with. I, I, I thought I had heard the applicant mention that they had reached out to some Waymouth officials, maybe that is just in the planning department so far? Can you, can you clarify that?
Sure. We met with Mayor Hedlund, the head of his Conservation Department, the Assistant Conservation Agent, his Chief of Staff, and the Town Solicitor, and the Planning Director. And at that meeting, we said we'd be happy to participate in a community meeting, specifically for residents of Waymouth. The Planning Director indicated that he would coordinate that, and he would reach out to us with a date. So as soon as the date is sent to us, we'll participate.
Great, so it sounds like that's underway, so hopefully that gives you an opportunity to discuss it in more detail.
I didn't know in Braintree you had to bring your pajamas to a meeting.
Me either. If you could just state your name and address for the record.
Kathy Swain, one thirty-four Mill Street. I spoke briefly last time, and I just want to reiterate, the traffic is going to be an issue, we all know traffic's going to be an issue. Brigham's hasn't started in there, we're going to have Brigham's, and we're going to, seventy percent of the traffic's going to come down West Street, so they're going to get off the former routes sixteen B and sixteen A, and come up eighteen, and take a right onto West Street to get to Banner Park. That's the way people go. And I'm going to say- A part of the size of the building, we need to be, I know it's a difficult sidewalk to get, I told you last time, I'm just having lunch, watching, I'm going to back that, I'm going to, climb over the gap, and get to the entry. And there's a lot of this, people out of Banner Park, there's no lighting, like you can push to cross, and if you go across, there's not enough room to put a sidewalk because of the retaining wall. I know this is a difficult issue, but I think now's the time to do it, we missed it, Waymouth kind of fell off the boat with, when Brigham's was coming in, something should have been done then, and they missed that opportunity, but the opportunity's here again, to really make it safe for anybody who wants to get to that site, or leave that site for lunch, or walk over to Birch Street and Braintree, you might have to be a little creative, and I will send the Planning Director a picture. This is the picture of Route eighteen at two o'clock the other day, and the cars were backed up onto Route three. So we're having a big problem with Route eighteen right now, it's backing up, this is going to be another big issue, so the state needs to be involved, and if the state's going to be involved, it's a state road, and they need to be involved with the sidewalks. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Madam Chair, I don't want to cut off any of the speakers, but what I'm going to do for the next hearing is just pull out the mitigation package that we had for Brigham, because some of the things that are mentioned this evening are already part of their mitigation.
For when Brigham is online?
Yes.
Okay.
Good evening, members of the board. I'm David Tower, sixty-nine Tommy Marks Way. So I just, you know, obviously, nobody's happy with the size and magnitude of this property. One of my questions, because I hear the name come up now and now again, Tri-Town Park, so I'm wondering if this project is not being chopped into pieces? I don't know if that went through a MEPA process way back, you know, twenty-something years ago, but if it did, this would probably require a notice of project change, but I mean, if you take out Brigham and Women's, and now you put these two monstrosity buildings there, what's next? You know, you're going to want to build on the backside too? And then this becomes a project much larger than the original proposed project thirty years ago. So I, I don't know if you have the answers to that, but I would like to know that, and, you know, does this require a MEPA process? You know, some of the modifications were nice, I mean, a fence, I mean, Jerry hit most of the items, they're minor in scale. The New England Wildlife Center, when they came to us, they were right on the property line, they gave us a hundred-foot buffer zone, untouched of trees, so they didn't have to replant things, they didn't have to encroach the wetlands. I mean, you know, I would like the developer to consider something of that nature. I mean, you know, taking down all those trees and then planting small trees is not great for the environment, so. I know there's orders in Braintree, you've got tree ordinances, you've got buffer zones here, I mean, there's a lot of land there, they can redesign this, so they don't go into the buffer zones, they don't take down trees, and just follow your own policies. So I would like to see some of those answers, maybe, at the next meeting, if you could have them. I don't know if anybody has a copy of the old plan, I think that would be nice to see, you know, that versus this, and compare the size and magnitude.
Yeah, I think at one point, and I feel like I remember seeing some sort of diagram that was-
Collins had it last time.
Yeah, Concom posted it up real quick, and then it came down.
Yeah.
I mean, but they looked like smaller buildings stretched out through the property that probably didn't, weren't as intrusive, didn't, you know, take down so much, you know, but I'd like, you know, because when I look at this, it seems like it's being pieced together now, and I think, you know, it should be looked at as a whole.
Yeah, I think the applicant did mention this evening, a potential conservation easement on the remainder of the land, so it sounds like if that was the direction, that this would be the extent of development that that would see, and it would not be something like the Tricon, but we can have the applicant confirm at the next meeting.
Would you make that an order of conditions?
I think we would see what the proposal was, and if that was what was proposed, we wouldn't have to make it an order of conditions per se, because it would be, you know, if it was made a conservation land, however that metric was done, but we'll include that in the discussion moving forward, better identification of that future use of the land, if they are thinking of putting it, or will put it in conservation.
Okay, well, thank you very much, I'll save my traffic issues for the meeting when that's presented, and we can go down that road. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you.
Gary McDougal, one thirty-one Southern Ave, District Five Councillor, Waymouth. I spoke last time I was here. If you told me when I got elected, I'd spend more time in Braintree at a meeting, I'd just get unbelievable, but, couple things here. Looking at usage of this, I know the board is going to look at usage, one thing I learned last week was the, there's an office, office building being built, and then there's a warehouse, there's, they're not connected in business, they're two separate entities altogether. So I think the board should think about usage here, and how that is, applies to this applicant. I represent the team, the folks here, I call them team, right? And looking, I highly recommend the board take a drive over to Tommy Marks, just take a drive over, look at it, and look at how close this building's going to be. I think you'd see, if you were in your neighborhood, you'd be here at eleven thirty, too. So, I really think this board should consider looking at this project holistically, and looking at the two entities of the project, and figuring out what can be done to sort of either scale this back, or completely eliminate the warehouse part of this project, because I think this is just going to obliterate the, the neighborhoods in question on the Waymouth side of things. So, I think, I understand that they're, they're meeting with the town and the mayor, and I think that's great. Obviously, the town of Waymouth is, is pretty much opposed to this for obvious reasons, this doesn't have any, any benefit to Waymouth, other than the negative aspect of traffic, Kathy talked about traffic a little bit, I live on West Street, this is going to impact me, so this is in my neighborhood, too. So I think it's important for a traffic study, but I also think the board should really consider holistically looking at this project, and understanding the usage of it, and the need, office building, warehouse, not connected to any one business, they're two separate entities. So, thank you very much, and I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Carol Murphy, I live at seventy-seven Tommy Marks Way, I am the immediate abutter to that one hundred-foot buffer zone. I concur with a lot of what the neighbors have said, and so in order not to be redundant, I will limit my, my specific concerns. During the course of the evening, when the people that were seeking permits for the medical marijuana, one of the comments, I believe, that was made by the board when they were talking about a five-hundred-foot buffer zone, I think one of the board members made a comment that a five-hundred-foot buffer zone was really not a very big buffer. This project is proposing only one hundred feet from that warehouse to my residential property. If five hundred feet is not an adequate buffer zone, then certainly one hundred feet from a residential dwelling is absolutely inadequate, and I really want to stress that point to this board, and also to Mr. McDonald. One hundred feet is absolutely inadequate. The other thing I want to say is that I know that there have been some modifications made here, but still, there has to be many more modifications in terms of mitigating the noise pollution from the tractor-trailers, the ventilation systems, and the filtration systems. At the last meeting, there was a gentleman here who talked about his career in life sciences, and brought to your attention the amount of noise that will be generated just from the air filtration systems, cleaning the filtration systems within that life science building, let alone bringing all of that noise out into the environment that we have to live with every single day. There also has been no talk about our- There also has been no talk about hours of operation. We know that with warehouses, that the hours of operation usually are 24 hours a day, seven days a week. This is only 100 feet from a residential home, and 16 other homes in that neighborhood. There needs to be a sight and sound barrier. A six-foot wall is not going to mitigate those issues. So I think that that really has to be seriously fully looked at. I also have a question about some of the site work that's going to be done there. There's incredible amount of rocks and granite that is going to have to be moved. Is there going to be blasting? And if there's blasting, what kind of damage will be done to our foundations? This has not been addressed at all. What protection do we have? You know that there are issues with the wetlands. We know, and all of the, it was presented at the last meeting, that, and also before the Conservation Board last week, that there are issues with water in that area. There's issues with the water tables, there's issues with runoff, there's issues with the wetlands. Right now, one whole half of the 16 houses on Tommy Marks Way have a brook running behind them that runs right into the Mill River, and right into the Waymouth drinking water situation. It is a source of drinking water for Waymouth. And those houses already have issues. Their basements flood during the heavy far in the winter, and during heavy rains in the spring. If you take all of those trees out, and you take all of that soil out, you know, you know that there are going to be issues. It's going to be increased issues in terms of flooding for the basements on Tommy Marks Way. So there are many questions and concerns that remain unanswered. And yet, the developer, as was previously stated, and I know that his attorney has said that, they met with the mayor, and all of the important people in the town. But we're the people that have to live with this every single solitary day. I have lived there for 35 years, and quite frankly, it was my husband that was the developer. So I know what he had to go through in terms of conservation. They were very stringent with him. They had to be very, very careful about every house that was developed along that street in terms of conservation and wetlands. And I know he took the time, and he mitigated all of those concerns. And he put his money where his mouth is, because we moved into that development, and I have been there for 35 years. And I don't want the quality of my life, at my stage of life, to be subjected to this kind of an environment. I thank you for your time, and I pray for your consideration.
Thank you for your comments.
Okay, I'm coming up as Lynn Gapman, the resident of Braintree, 14 Perry Road. And this is really why I was at this meeting all night long, not for the flower thing, but the traffic in Braintree is outrageous. I can't drive across town. Where are all these trucks going to come and go? They say they're going to go down the Waymouth streets, but you guys all live in Braintree, how do you get to Central Hospital? You go down Route 18? No. Everyone goes by that Grove Street on CVS, right? And the traffic there? I grew up two streets up from the Grove Street on CVS. And the traffic in Braintree needs to be considered. I can't get to Ellis Gymnastics with my granddaughter. I have pictures, 2:45. Anyone want to see? Hmm? With the bus coming out of the New Garden School, backed up all the way to Crossroads. So those are factors, I think, as a resident of Braintree, and I know that people of Waymouth have concerns, and they should. But Braintree also should have concerns, and shouldn't just be worried about the tax base all the time. Has to be, we need to live in this town. I need to cross the town to get to my appointments. I think that has to be said as a resident of Braintree.
Thank you.
Thanks.
My name is Yan May. I'm from 80 Tommy Marks Way. First, I wanted to agree with Mr. Murphy how horrible the traffic was on May 2nd, that, you know, for the sample I have experienced with the heavy traffic. I was thinking the same thing that day, how it would be like when this project continues. I wanted to say that I have kids, goes to Waymouth Middle and high school. I often hear parents complain on wintertime that buses were very delayed with no estimated time arrival to pick them up. It's very heartbroken to see how many kids will be affected. There's also times buses just leave too fast to not delay their schedule, and my child were one of the many kids that were not able to hop on his bus during dismissal time. I don't know how much worse it could be for their daily routine if there were to be increased heavy traffic around the Waymouth area where all the schools are located, in the south area. So I just wanted to raise that concern, and hopefully, this will be reconsidered. And that's all I have to say. Thank you so much.
Great, thank you so much. Sure? More?
Hi, Alan McDonald from Banner Park Campus. It doesn't feel like it would be constructive for me to sort of counterpoint debate with everybody, but I also didn't want to sit there and sort of act like I wasn't hearing folks or being responsive at all. The real general summary, as the team has put forward both last time and this time, is we are pursuing what we think is a really tremendous opportunity for the region, for Braintree specifically, yes, but also the region, in terms of economically, and creating jobs, and creating tax revenue, and creating a community environment for people for the region. And we're doing it in a way, we've, you know, we're working with experts that have put together a plan. We've directed them to put together a plan that addresses environmental concerns, and all the different regulations concerns, from a local perspective, from a state perspective. We are doing outreach, we're here. Hopefully, we're trying to show that we are listening. Whether people feel it's enough or not is obviously something we can always debate, but, you know, I think we came here in good faith, listening last time, and trying to put forward some constructive commentary and mitigation to try and address those concerns. And we'll continue doing that. We've been meeting with Braintree city councilors, as we mentioned. We've had meetings with the executive folks for the town of Waymouth, and are very open to meeting with other folks in Waymouth, and continue this dialogue. That when I stood up here last time, I said, we realize this is a process, and we're trying to go through it. And so, as I say, didn't want to directly counterpoint each one, but, you know, I want to emphasize we're trying to do this in good faith, and I think ultimately, it's going to generate something that's very good for the region.
Hi, Stephanie Robenstein, 800 Tommy Marks Way. I think experts are great, but I would consider us experts. As we live in the neighborhood, we drive from Waymouth to Braintree, we all know what the traffic is like. So that's, I'm going to follow up with that. We know the wetlands are at risk, and we know that spillage, what is spillage? I think you said from your peer review that you were worried about spillage. Do we know what's going in here? So what spillage are they worried about? That's a major concern. That's it.
Great, thank you. Is there anybody else? All right. Member McComey, do you have any comments, questions at this time?
No, nothing.
Member Cora, do you have any comments, questions?
Not at this time, thank you, thank you.
Member Grove, any comments or questions? Member Kent, any comments or questions?
Appreciate the input from the folks in Waymouth who came here five hours ago, whatever it was. It's impressive.
Member Connolly, do you have any comments or questions?
I do, thank you. In terms of the community meeting, I'd like the developers to take a more proactive role in this process. The people that you need to talk to are in this room, and their information is available in Braintree and in Waymouth. You can get lists of the butters and reach out to them by mail. So I'd appreciate that. I also ask for an explanation of the sighting of the buildings. Your plan is very different than the approach that was proposed by Tri-Con Park, and could you discuss that for us, to know why the buildings are where they are?
Sure. As to the second point, we try to disturb far less of the wetlands. The Tri-Con Park, I believe, had three or four wetland crossings. We have none. We tried not to disturb the rear of the parcel, or the parcelage, which has far more, I don't know, vulnerable environmental areas. As it relates to the community meeting, where the developers will do what we're told, but we have a mayor of Braintree, we have a mayor of Waymouth, we have town councilors, we have a planning board, we have a conservation commission. We just do what we're told. We were told that all community meetings in Braintree go to the planning director, specifically in that meeting, not to set up the community meeting ourselves, that he would set it up, he would do the mailing. They want to be responsible for that meeting. So I, I mean, I'm happy to talk to these folks.
Was that Waymouth? Sorry, you said...
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I drove into the neighborhood yesterday to take a look for myself. I'm happy to speak to any resident who wants to speak to any of us. But in terms of the community meeting, I'm just doing what I'm told. I will certainly reach out to the planning director in Waymouth tomorrow, and ask him, let him know your comments, and ask him if we can get a date on the books.
I think that's important. Melissa, what's your process for community meetings as far as developers?
I don't, I don't get involved at all. We, I deal, on the planning board level, typically, that's done by the counselor, the district counselor. I had made a suggestion months ago, probably in January, reach out to the district counselor, and I think Mr. Palmucci provided testimony last month that he did not want to have a neighborhood meeting. So I try to stay in my lane, in my role, and don't get into telling councilors, you know, how things are going to go down. I just make the suggestions. Nine out of 10 people, Counsel Palmucci, excuse me, Attorney Palmucci has done work here before in another district, and worked with that district counselor that had maybe three or four neighborhood meetings. So, again, we make the referral to the applicant to reach out to the council. We provide who it is and the information, and then, some councilors have them, some don't, some send awesome reports. I think this board has seen some. So they all have a different style. I respect those styles, and we kind of, I keep my role here with the planning board.
Thank you. And then, I visited the site, I visited Tommy Marks Way, and I appreciate the concerns that the residents have shared. One of the things that was mentioned was that there are small children in their neighborhood, and what has been the consideration of your team as far as barriers to keep children out of this area as it's developed?
As it's developed, or after it's developed?
Both, really. There are, you know, when you go to that neighborhood, you see bikes, you see basketballs, there are children there. How are your team, how is your team planning to keep them safe?
Sure. First and foremost, I think the 300-foot wooded buffer would be primarily, if someone has a young child, I would not expect them to allow their kid to wander 75% of a football field through the woods away from them. But I'm sure we would follow, the construction team would follow normal OSHA, and any other protocols that the board or the town would want us to follow. I mean, I think there's standard fencing that goes up, things along that nature. But beyond that, after it's created, I don't know of any specific measures we would take to prevent young children from entering the woods and going over to the project. I mean, I would imagine it'd be the same situation as now. You know, I don't, I didn't, I don't know if that's an issue now, but we certainly look at it, and if it needs to be addressed, we will.
Okay. So as part of your construction management plan, the fencing and all of those things would be included in that?
Sure.
Right, thank you.
Thank you, Member Connolly. I want to recall at the last meeting that district counselor for Braintree was here. I don't see him this evening, but maybe we can, maybe the applicant can reach out and inquire about maybe collaborating on some sort of neighborhood meeting, as would be appropriate. I think he had expressed that he would, you know, do something, but I don't remember, I don't have it written down in my notes, and I don't have the minutes specifically related to that. But it's always helpful to have commentary come from the councilors on both sides. You know, they have a unique opportunity to know the neighborhoods, know the people, know the concerns, and have, you know, a unique way to negotiate and work through items ahead of our meeting, to make it easier for us to review, and really fine-tune the things that are most impactful. So I would, I would second Member Connolly's advice to really make sure those neighborhood meetings happen, and there is good record of what comes out of that. So thank you very much for that.
Sure. If I could just add, Councilor Mackin, we met with him prior to filing. We've updated him on the change of plans. We sent him this presentation Friday or yesterday. We have a scheduled meeting with him tomorrow to talk about the plans, and I had emailed him this morning to let him know that the planning director in Waymouth was likely to be scheduling a community meeting, and letting him know that. Again, we do what we're told. It's, I don't think anyone would be happy if we just announced we're having a community meeting. I don't think any councilors or mayors would be happy if we just did that on our own. So if someone wants us to participate in a community meeting, we're more than willing to do so.
Great, thank you. I don't have any further comments this evening, so we would be looking to continue this. Will we be putting this on the June agenda? Is that the next, or are we going to look at July? What is the, what is the timing of this?
I think we should continue it to June. What I'm going to be doing is looking at Deb's comments. They have Deb's comments. Collis is going to be looking at those, and I had suggested to Collis, once they're kind of getting going on that, that we sit down with the town engineer, and kind of go over the comments and the responses, and start to kind of shape and mold, and, you know, call out things that are, need to, you know, more addressed, this works, this doesn't, and start to kind of work towards, work towards those kinds of discussions.
Okay.
Yep. I haven't provided my staff report yet. I will have that for the next meeting. Collis also asked me about it. Just trying to manage, manage the workload, and I wanted to wait for Deb's memo, because that's super helpful. And I have taken some, I've been looking at this for a while. I don't anticipate having extensive comments. I did want to, just very quickly, it is very late, but just for the benefit of the people here this evening, the planning board and Massachusetts permits uses, who a particular tenant is, or who's going to be occupying a building, isn't something that we can condition. As we're doing permitting, if there is, for example, we had an application this evening, they know it's going to be CVS, they talk about CVS, but we very often permit office buildings, warehouse buildings, and we don't know exactly who the tenant's going to be, and that's where the conditions become very important. So we tend to work up conditions that have controls in place that could potentially not be attractive to some tenants, and may be attractive to other tenants. But in no, in no decision are you going to see called out, this has to be Mary Smith's Warehouse LLC, or something like that. Even in the draft conditions that we had, we refer to it as a retail pharmacy. That's our use category. So I'm just setting expectations, if people, if we go through this entire process and tenants are not spoken of, that is not unusual, and that is completely within the confines of the board. Again, we're permitting the use in the impacts from a particular use, and that's where the conditions come in with the special permit. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Great, thank you.
So it sounds like there'll be a lot of outreach between now and... I would strongly suggest that the applicant does perform, does do that community outreach prior to that June meeting because I think we need to have, we have to have some progress on some of these concerns one way or the other. So it'd be good to have that happen between now and our next meeting. So Chair, entertain a motion to continue this application to the June 14th meeting at 7:15. We have a motion by Member Grove. Do we have a second? Second by Member Kent. All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? We will continue this matter to June 14th. The last item on our agenda this evening is approval of meeting minutes from April 12th, 2022. Can we get a motion to approve or commentary on revisions? We have a motion by Member Kent. Do we have a second? Second by Member McComey. All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? Minutes pass. Motion to adjourn...
If you still have a meeting going on, please, we will thank you.
Motion to adjourn. So moved by Member Grove, second. Second by Member Kent. All those in favor? Aye. It is not midnight yet.